Chair DeBois?
Here.
Councilmember Phil Seth? Councilmember Fine?
Here.
Mayor Scharf? For present.
Great, thank you. So this is November 29th Rail Committee meeting. First item is Oral Communications. We have two speakers, Stefan Rosenblum and then followed by Richard Brand.
Good morning. I am reporting here as a citizen from the two roundtables that I attended. The first Mitchell Park and the second one was yesterday down here which seems to have just interrupted three connections. It's working?
Okay. So the one at Mitchell Park had a very large attendance and the table that I sat at, most of the people were not very knowledgeable about the rail situation. They came there to be educated and it was quite noisy. I could hardly hear the conversation from the other end of the table. The one yesterday in City Hall, on the other hand, I sat at a table with very knowledgeable people. The attendance was modest, but I could hear everything quite well and I felt it was quite effective. The two comments I'd like to make about the discussions were, first of all, the questions that were posed by staff yesterday particularly about closing Churchill. The question was posed, would you support closing Churchill without providing any suggested alternative, which was a fairly open-ended question. So then, of course, people got into a big discussion about closing it, where would the traffic go, how would there still be bike and pedestrian access? And so it got to be very involved and long into a design issue, which I felt wasn't really appropriate for a discussion of citizens. A question also that arose in both forums was the cost, and I think that was the one that I took away as the most important. How much would each option cost? And then the question was posed about a tax increase. Would you support a tax increase? And the question was how much and what would it pay for? So I think in the absence of that kind of knowledge, that question is pretty badly posed. The last thing I'd like to say is on the bingo cards, there was no separation made between a bored tunnel and a cut-and-cover trench. And I think those are, to me, are two quite different options, entailing quite a different construction and different costs. So I think in the future, those two types of construction should be separated on the bingo cards. Thank you.
Richard Brand?
Yeah, good morning, everybody. Richard Brand, resident, Palo Alto resident, 281 Addison. My subject here is the Dumbarton Rail, which this group has discussed. And there is a recent letter that was crafted by San Mateo County Supervisor Warren Slocum to the MTC regarding, requesting that the MTC support the project. And several of the sister city, our sister cities have signed on to this. Supervisor Semitian has signed to this. Even the Silicon Valley Leadership Group has signed on to this. And so what I'm asking the Rail Committee here is to authorize or take action, whatever's needed, to have our mayor sign on to this letter as well. I have forwarded a copy of the letter to some of you late last night. Sorry, it was pretty late and so I didn't copy everybody. But I know that Josh, you're the, I guess, stakeholder, as you said, last meeting. So I think a brief letter to put it on a consent calendar, whatever is necessary, so that Greg can sign on to this as well. It's an important issue and as we know, people in Crescent Park are suffering dearly. My kids live over in that area and the afternoon traffic getting into the, over to the East Bay is horrible, backing all the way up into Crescent Park. So this is an important project and I urge you to take whatever action is needed to authorize Greg to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have one more speaker. Elizabeth Alexis.
Good morning, ma'am. I just wanted to comment on something that happened at the Churchill meeting. I was not there, but Nadi was. Apparently, there was a group, a table where they basically refused to participate in the bingo card exercise. And it refused for a reason that I actually find quite valid. And they basically said, don't ask me to sign on to something if I don't actually participate.
And what it entails. Like, I don't have enough information. I don't know, you know, you've thrown this one on there. I don't know what the turn movements are. I don't know what the implications would be for any other kinds of traffic. I don't know what it would do to our creeks. Don't ask me to make decisions without enough information, because I'll give you an answer. But, you know, you can either misuse that, misinterpret it, or you're asking me to commit to something which maybe later on, I'm not going to want to do, but I felt like I voted for it at the beginning. So, you know, you can ask the general preference, right? Like, you know, how strongly do you feel about, you know, making the trains, like, not be above surface or whatever? But, like, don't ask me to get into specific alignments until I understand what they really look like and what the implications would be like, because that information is not useful to you. So, I mean, I think we keep saying we're doing a CSS process and throwing out alternatives and having people vote on them before you've really done initial conditions, right? Like, what is the creeks? What are this? What are that? Like, that's, you know, we already, if we wanted some kind of general sense, I think we have that, right? But so now asking people to rank order and three, and then some alternatives weren't even on there. I think a full aerial wasn't even on there. You know, we really have to question, like, is, are we in that spirit of CSS? Thanks.
Thank you. So I think some of us can stay till 11:00, but I think staff has it cut off at 10:00. So we're going to try to see how much of the agenda we can get through by 10:00 o'clock. And our first item is a presentation by the City of Burlingame.
Great. Good morning, Chair, members of the committee. I'm Josh Melo, the City's Chief Transportation Official. This morning, we've invited Eddie Mercurio from AECOM to give us a presentation on some grade separation planning efforts that they've recently undertaken in Burlingame. I was also extended an invite to the Public Works Director of Burlingame, but unfortunately today, he had a conflict and was not able to attend. But Eddie has been involved, you know, throughout the process and she's willing to give us some, an overview of the process and talk about some of the lessons they learned. And with that, I'll turn it over to her.
So, thank you. So what I just, I'm going to show you here today is a compilation of the 18 months that we did for, sorry, yeah, that we undertook to do a project study report. And at the end of the, this 18 months, the City Council then took action to recommend a preferred alternative that is now going forward into environmental document and final design eventually. So the project area in Burlingame, and oops, shoot, sorry. Sensitive here. Is, if you're not aware, if the, let's see if I can get my mouse to work here. There we go. Is, we're just looking at one grade separation, which was the Broadway Avenue in Burlingame. And we had a couple constraints in that we have the Millbrae Station to the north, the Burlingame Station to the south, we have the Bay to the east. And to the west, we had, you know, the developed area of Burlingame. And so those were kind of the major constraints in the general location. So the overview of what we did, undertook over these 18 months is, we really started with a development of a public outreach plan and strategy, which entailed three public outreach meetings, two City Council meetings, meetings with property owners, major property owners, and the Downtown Business Association. I'm just going to kind of give you a brief overview of what those are and if you want to stop and ask questions, I, you know, please, please do so. So the first public outreach meeting that we took down was basically, we did not do any initial engineering or analysis. We just kind of started off with a overview of the site. What are the history? There's been this grade separation has been studied since the 1950s in Broadway. And we just defined the need, the existing conditions, looked at example grade separations. And then we allowed the community, we did breakout sections, sessions where we had about, I think, six tables where the community had the ability to talk about their concerns and issues about the grade separations and what are some of the opportunities that we could use if this project were to move forward to do some improvements. And this is just in a sample that the, the community, you know, took down these notes. At the end of the public outreach meeting, we put out a summary, and this is all posted on the city's website, to try and show it, you know, to be transparent and show the process and making sure that if people weren't at the meeting, that they were, you know, informed of what happened at that meeting. And one of the big items that came out of this one was really to ensure that this was not a high-speed rail project. This was a city project to improve safety and enhance safety for the public. The second public outreach meeting was where we had done some engineering. We had identified six alternatives. All six alternatives were prepared exhibits for those. The six alternatives were a full trench of the railroad, a fully elevated railroad, excuse me, a fully depressed roadway, a fully elevated roadway, and then two hybrids where the railroad was partially depressed, railroad was elevated, and then the, flip that for the alternatives. The, in this one, we had already done some traffic analysis. This is really going to the need, showing, you know, in today's world, a traffic analysis, you know, we're showing delays of, excuse me, in the projected 2040 time, you know, you'd be on the delays of the order of 12, 13 minutes if you continued to have the grade and that if you did a grade separation, you'd be on delays of less than a minute for those. We also did a quantified benefits of what those delays meant in dollars. And these are, you know, travel time savings and these were equated to, you know, savings for greenhouse emissions as well as, you know, fuel savings, et cetera. Then in this presentation, we also went through all six alternatives. At this public outreach meeting, we had a time prior to that where all the exhibits were in the room, where the community could come in and sit and look at, you know, have a, up close look at all the alternatives and ask staff about those. And then we, in the presentation, we went through all six alternatives. And I'm just going to quickly go through these. And everything that I show here has been, was posted on the city's website and is available for view. So Alternative S was, was the, what we call the fully elevated railroad, not a, you know, and we went through the major, on the left-hand side were the constraints and cons. On the right-hand side on the list is what were the other major constraints. And we kind of walked the, in the presentation, walked through that. Alternative E was, we walked through those alternatives for, which is, this is a fully depressed or trench version, alternative. Alternative D, where it is the roadway is fully elevated, the railroad is left as is. Alternative C was the opposite, where you're fully depressed. And Alternative A was the hybrid, and alternative, excuse me, B was a hybrid, and Alternative A was the other hybrid where you partially depressed the roadway, which is the most common one you see here along the Caltrain Corridor with the roadway partially depressed and the railroad partially elevated. So from that second public outreach meeting, we then went to the City Council. And the City Council basically was a presentation of what we had done at the public outreach meeting. But one of the outcomes of the second public outreach meeting was that as engineers, we developed these 2D drawings and nobody could really visualize that. So there was a request from that one that we do a 3D animation. So we prepared a 3D animation. By the time we went to the City Council, and I made a mistake here, is we had a 3D, one 3D animation for Alternative A, which, this is the, the 3D animation that we prepared for Alternative A. And we, it's a little slow. We had a little, I didn't edit this down a little bit. But basically, this is the alternative where we partially depress the roadway and partially elevate the roadway, I mean, the rail. And this was presented at council to show them, you know, what this would look. That's Mike Harvey's auto dealership there on the left-hand side of that larger building. And then we show a view looking westbound. Now there's Mark Harvey's is there on the right-hand side. And
Surrounded by parking lots.
And we were, just to, as a sample, we took the, the look of San Carlos to kind of show, you know, as a, as an example for that. And then this is, the city, the city made a commitment, because we're showing a lot of landscaping, that, you know, if this alternative were to be going forward, that they would be doing landscaping. And then there is a station there at Broadway that's not active except on weekends right now, but, you know, this was just a, you know, a example of an elevated platform station. And here, we're showing outboard platforms, but that's just an example. It could be inboard platforms, depending, you know, again, as they move forward through the environmental document, final engineering, those are some of the decisions that are made. And this is Caroline that also has a complete streets project on it as well for now. So after council, we had a third public outreach meeting where we, basically, by the second public outreach meeting and the council meeting, we had eliminated four alternatives and we only were down to two alternatives. And that was, and between the second and third, we went back to the businesses. We went and we were presenting these to the property owners, the community, who were not at the community meetings. And after the City Council meeting, second City Council meeting, it was basically agreed that we'd only take two more, two of the alternatives forward, which were the hybrid alternatives of, and the four, the trench, the fully elevated, and the roadway fully depressed elevated were eliminated. There were fatal flaws that we had walked through in the second public outreach meeting for the, for those alternatives. And basically, we were only taking two alternatives forward. At that point, after the second City Council meeting, since we had only done one 3D animation, the council requested that we, for the two alternatives that we were taking forward, we do 3D animation for those as well. And so then we produced the 3D animation for the Alternative B, which is depressing the railroad slightly and elevating the track. And there was some significant right-of-way issues that were, were kind of brought forward as a result of this alternative. And those were, so those big Xs are full-take properties because of the grade differentials on this particular property. And because of the future electrification, we also have to do some higher fencing in order to not allow, you know, the electrified wires to be, they have to be contained and be safe. So that's what's shown in this, this alternative here. And this was presented at the third public outreach meeting. And the third public outreach meeting really focused on Alternatives A and B, which were the, the two left on the table. And one of the items that came out from, from that particular one was, was from the 3D animations, the comments that we got back is that the 3D animation is looking from a bird's eye view. And there was a comment that, well, what does it look like when I stand in the project and look at the project? And so we did, this is an existing photo, and we did photo simulations. This is what, so go back. So this is looking, excuse me, this is looking east at the grade separation? Excuse me, west, sorry, thank you. Oops, go back. And this is the, you know, looking slightly depressed at looking at that same view for Alternate A. This is the Alternative B. This is on Caroline looking east. This is Alternative A, Alternative B. This is looking towards, this is now looking west, I mean, east, excuse me, at the Mike Harvey's. This is Alternative A, Alternative B. And this is standing on the south, excuse me, the north side of the project, looking south. This is Alternative A, Alternative B. And the other thing that we also did for these things is we also had 3D virtual reality goggles, which I don't have with me here today. But those were also available at the third public outreach meeting where people could actually put those on and actually be in the project and be able to see the project from various views. Yes?
Is there a reason you didn't show landscaping, Alternative B?
Yes, because there's tiebacks here. And so there is a, so when you do, when we, when we're digging down this deep, we're actually going to have, in order to, and based on the width there, we're going to have to have tieback rods that are going to extend 20 to 30 feet back. So if you put landscaping in there, those could interfere with your tiebacks. So you really can only put a grass landscaping in this particular alternative.
Not even bushes or anything?
You can probably put some bushes in there, but, yeah. But, but, but there's, there's, you know, you can't inhibit that, you know, you can't, you know, disturb the structural integrity of those tiebacks. And then we went kind of through the pros and cons. The city was the, again, presented, you know, between Alternatives A, the pros and cons, Alternative, and I'm not going to go through all the details of the pros and cons. And then kind of, on a high level, recapped the pros and cons. And really what came to the surface was that Alternative A was the preferred alternative due to impacts. And Alternative A is the, is the most common one that you see along the Caltrain Corner, which is a partially depressed road with partially elevated rail. And we, at the third public outreach meeting, we took a survey of who supported which alternative. The survey results were the majority supported Alternative A. Also, the, at the third public outreach, the businesses came in, the Downtown Business Association had actually, at their own, without us prompting, had actually had gone and got signatures of all the 26, 36 of the business community members supporting Alternative A. And that was what was brought forward to council at the second council meeting, where we did an overview of the public outreach. We showed the 3D animations for Alternative A and B, and City Council took action on a preferred alternative. So kind of to re, and now the, the process is, is the city went to Cal, the JPB, and got funds for the next step, which is the public, excuse me, the environmental document project, environmental document preliminary engineering phase, which is undergoing right now. And they're actively seeking funds for full funding for the construction right now. And so the kind of taking back the, the lessons really learned was, is, we had a very, very good public outreach person who was able to moderate the public outreach meetings and kind of keep them focused. She was also very instrumental in kind of looking at, at the engineering, you know, drawings and where, and was really kind of going back and making those graphics so that they were easily understood by, by the community as a layperson, not an engineer, you know, taking a critical eye. And then the other piece was really going back and finding that medium, which is the 3D animation, the virtual reality goggles and the renderings, to basically try and convey what the, what the project would look like in that regards. And going back to the four projects, the four alternatives that were eliminated, part of that was really walking through what the constraints were. There was, in, you know, and every project along the corridor is a little different. But I'll go back to that first slide. This one here. At the north end, where we have Millbrae Station, we also have the tail tracks for Bart. And as we started to look at doing anything with the rail, we came to a point where this Caltrain operational constraint was a fatal flaw in, in, in anything that had the tracks longer, which was what we had in alternatives, the trench or the aerial version. And then you had also the Burlingame Station to the south, which was also a constraint. But mainly, we had a Caltrain operational constraint to the north here that, that really limited what alternatives could be moved forward in this particular area. So with that, I'll just, questions, oh. And then the other item is, is, again, as I mentioned, everything was posted within a couple of weeks to the city website, and it's still up there now. And then we also had frequently asked questions, so that we, we actually prepared a fact sheet that was also part of the project that was posted to the website as well. So.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions, comments? Yeah?
So first of all, thank you very much for joining us and doing this this morning. This is great. For Alternative A, were there any land acquisition issues that you had to grapple with?
There, there will be land acquisitions, but there'll be, Alternative A, and, oh, this isn't, I didn't bring that exhibit here. We, part of our, in our public outreach PD number two, is we identified potential acquisitions, whether they were full takes. So in this act, this exhibit here, red in these exhibits indicated full takes and yellows were partial takes. In Alternative A, we identified several partial takes, but no full take acquisitions. And again, in the, in the final engineering, you know, part of that will be, you know, sharpening in your, the pencils to minimize those acquisitions. The, also in this particular area, the properties, you know, to, immediately to the east and to the west of the track, were, there are some Caltrain and public-owned properties. The one that was privately owned was Mike Harvey's Auto Dealership, which is now a storage. And he was not adverse to the acquisition and so.
So there weren't people's houses involved or anything like that?
No, this, there is really no residential in this particular area. The biggest issue is, yeah. To the, on the east side, further to the south is where we get into some of the residential. And it, by, when we shorten up Alternates A and B, where the track, the relocation or the, the impact of the track is shorter, you're staying out of the areas of those. But we did take simulation views where on Caroline, you start getting into the apartments so that we kind of showed them like a view of where, you know, how high the track elevation would be at those particular locations where you get into residential.
Thank you very much for coming. This was really helpful. Two, I guess, one question. In, in Alternative A, are California and Caroline, do you still have turning movements onto Broadway?
Yes.
Okay.
We actu, yes, we actually added, so there is a, as you probably are, probably, there's a big construction of the reconstruction of Broadway. And so that had already taken into account, you know, the widening of Broadway up to, so this project will blend into that, but there are turning movements onto those. And I don't have a blow up here of those.
Yeah, it's just hard to read here. And the second thing, can you go to the slide of the quantified benefits?
Yes. Okay.
I, I just found that pretty helpful, actually, when you were looking at, you know, hey, the delays, if we do nothing, are going to be, you know, 13 minutes, and if we do this grade separation, it's going to be a 32nd thing. And the benefits in terms of gas savings, time savings, et cetera, are estimated to be such. That's something that we haven't quite done yet, but I hope we get to a point where we can have a graph or that's similar to these two. I think this is actually.
So, so we had our, our traffic analysis do, you know, an analysis of present-day condition and taking present-day condition and looking at a 2040 timeframe and then look at, and that was also, this analysis also included the additional trains that Caltrain is already planning to implement under their electrification project. And look at those for future if you did nothing. And then we ran the analysis, looking at the improved, which also included turning movements, making sure we had turning pockets. And then those delays or those, you know, were quantified into dollars based on, you know, time savings, based on a certain, assuming, I think our economist assumed somebody was only making $20 an hour, which we know is probably not true in this, but fuel savings, and then basically quantified those into dollars. And this is kind of the pie that kind of came about for, these are annual savings.
Yep. So I just thought this was really helpful. Thank you.
So just a couple of quick comments. I liked how you guys had the exhibits at the meetings. That might be something we think about, some of the feedback I've gotten from the communities. You know, we have people attending all the meetings who get a lot of the background from the early stuff, but some people show up. And in some of our recent meetings, there really wasn't any information, background information, so that might be something. If we make those exhibits, we can just keep reusing them, keep putting them up so people can get the background. I also really liked these two slides. They really stood out to me. And I think it's just really simple. If we make those exhibits, we can just keep reusing them, keep putting them up so people can get the background. I also really liked these two slides. They really stood out to me. And I think it's just really simple to understand, thirteen minute delay going to thirty second delay. So I think it's a good way to boil down a lot of the traffic information, just, and something that people can understand. I was curious, so you talked about that Caltrain impact. How, how early was Caltrain involved in your process?
From the beginning. I mean, this, the, the study was funded through the J P B. So the city made an application for the grant, which was what funded it. So they'd been involved every step away. They also showed up to all the public outreach meetings and the city council meetings, a representative from Caltrain, except for the first one, excuse me. I don't think they were at the first one, but they were, they had at least a representative at every meeting, which was really helpful. The other thing that was also very helpful that I, I forgot to mention is that the public, excuse me, the police chief and the, the fire chief came to our second public outreach meeting and the third public outreach meeting. And, and basically, you know, you know, where they're very in favor of the grade separations because of the delays that the current, you know, at grade has for their ability to have, you know, quick response.
So that, that's interesting. And then on those scenarios, with the hybrid scenarios, were you, people asking about noise? Was there any way you kind of showed the impacts of noise?
So the very, and I don't have that, I should have brought all my, my presentations. But the, the, we did, the very, we did a noise, we did a very crude noise measurement, a twenty-four hour measurement before we did our first public outreach meeting, which was basically to just kind of look at the twenty-four hour noise measurement. We did not have enough money in this particular study to do noise study, I mean, noise evaluation, but that would be, you know, the commitment was that would be done in the next phase of preliminary engineering. That, and again, because it's, once you, noise modeling is a very complex process. So we talked about more of noise on kind of the higher level. That, in this particular case, you know, when you grade separation, the, the trains would no longer have to blow their horns. That however Caltrain came back is, is, is that, you know, because there's a station there, you probably would still have the, you know, the, the blowing of the horns. But U P freight would not have to blow their horns. And U P, and that was one of the big noise complaints, is that U P runs a local that goes like at one or two o'clock in the morning, and, and that, that was the, the biggest noise issue that people had, was that two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, I was curious, so with Caltrain kind of participating along the way, were they stating preferences for alternatives, like in your early meetings? Or they were just there to?
No, they did not take a, a stance on any preference of alternatives. They did have comments on their operational needs. You know, we had to take into account that, and in the third public outreach meeting, we went through a detailed construction sequencing of those two alternatives. And the biggest issue when you're doing construction sequencing is you have to keep Caltrain operational for all commuter service. So you have very narrow windows, so it, it affects your, how you construct, and it affects how, how long your construction goes as well.
Yep. And I'm just curious, could you give us just a quick background on A E com? Like, what do you guys do, and what's your expertise?
So A E com is a full-service engineering firm. We do a lot of things. We're about a hundred thousand people worldwide. Here locally, we are, you know, I'm working the transit group. We were hired by the city of Burlingame back in twenty fourteen to do this study. We have a, a long history of doing transit, highway, and engineering here in the, locally in the Bay Area.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, no more questions. Just thank you again for coming today. Yep, we'll move on to the draft rail circulation study white paper.
Great, thank you, Chair, members of the committee. This is a presentation on the first one of our white papers that are gonna be part of this alternatives analysis phase. Our intent with these papers is to release them as working drafts. Part of our effort to be transparent in this alternative analysis process is to release our studies as soon as they're available for public review. That being said, there will no doubt, undoubtedly need to be, you know, some corrections made before the report's finalized. But we did wanna have Chris Metzger from Mount McDonald come and present the working draft of the report on the first run, first set of model runs that we did under the circulation study. And the intent of this is to just help inform us a little bit as we move forward with the alternatives analysis. It's not intended to be the be all and end all of traffic analysis that's conducted as part of this project. It's just really the first set of model runs. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chris, who's gonna give you an overview of the study and then answer questions that you may have.
Thanks, Josh. Good morning. Excuse me. So we'll walk through introduction and background, talk about the impacts in no build, and then look at some of the sample scenarios, just for vehicles, and then also for bicycles and pedestrians. We separated those out for simpler discussion. Something to note, especially on the, on the heels of the presentation you just saw, is, is really what we're aiming for with this work at this point is to give information for how to make decisions between the various locations and the various options at the various locations. So, you know, we're looking at impacts between different locations and different options as opposed to just looking at one, one location. So, again, the study is, is essentially what-if scenarios related to the four at-grade crossings. You have a list there of, of different options that we've talked about before that you can do at any of the four, and you can mix and match. And so that's what we tried to do with this study, is look at, if you were to do different mix and match options and scenarios, what overall would you expect to happen with traffic in the, in the city of Palo Alto? We started with traffic counts in two thousand seventeen at the rail crossings to make sure we had today's behavior understood. We blended that with the city's model, which is the third step down, if you will, from the regional M T C model and the V T A model. And then you have the city's cube model. So then, so these all, all kind of flow down from each other and using those regional county and city projections. And then we distribute growth to the different roadways based on best practices that are, are standard for the industry. So that's identified here. So in general, we have two models that we work with. In, in this study, we will look at the city's model, which, again, that's, that's a subset, if you will, of the regional and county models. And then we also have a traffic operational model. So the, the city model really looks at major flow patterns on the major corridors. It does not look at every single street. It does not look at every, every little bit of it. But it does give you a, a good understanding of general flow patterns in the A M and the P M. Operationally, when you get into an intersection level analysis, then we, we look at a different model. We take the data out of the one model and put it into a, a smaller model, Synchro, that looks at more localized impacts, such as delays and queuing and level of service. And again, as mentioned, there are several roadway modifications considered. Some, some basic notes, as you know, trains and, and even cars don't run the same every day. They vary day to day, and we have to, for modeling purposes, just make assumptions on averages. So we do that. The peak hours are based on typical times of years when the schools are active. I will note, and I will probably say it three or four times, the peaks of vehicles do not align with the peaks of, of trains. So when you're talking about a peak hour, we tend to look at peak periods. So we're looking at a four-hour window, and we look at averages of the peaks of vehicles and averages of peaks of, of trains. So it's not adding the peak on the peak because they don't actually happen at the same time generally. So I think that's very important when you're looking at, at the modeling tools that we have. Actual travel delay is, is generally larger impact than the, when you increase the gate closure. So the, the time it takes to stop and the time it takes to reactivate in a queue and so on, the more times the gate, the more gate closures you have, the, the impact is more than, than two plus two gets you five in that situation, not four, as you go forward. And again, I think we've talked about this multiple times, that the gate preemption requirements for Caltrain preclude the ability to synchronize lights on Alma to any effective effectiveness, and that's the, the state we're in at this point. So we looked at impacts under no build scenarios. Again, we've, we've talked about this before. You've seen this chart, I think. Just looking at today, and again, looking at the four-hour window, we understand, we know there are ten trains per hour, but in terms of the model, it, it looks at six trains, and we've gone out to the field to observe that when we were putting the modeling together. And that's, that matches when we try to match up the model with the traffic counts. So, and looking at forty-five seconds every ten minutes. So again, we normalize that for the model. When we look at what's going to happen, we're looking at twenty trains per hour, so doubling plus the amount of closure time. You can see there from the little graphic that it leaves very little green time, and I think that, we all know that's coming, and, and as the numbers showed in, in Burlingame, it won't leave much time for traffic to move. And this just shows some of the progression as you go from today to when electrification begins to occur, and then when it's fully engaged and you're running at the, the twenty trains per hour in twenty twenty-five. So some of the, some of the effects of Caltrain and high-speed rail modifications, you have a twenty percent reduction of capacity of roadways versus twenty seventeen as a result of the, the train increase, in frequency increase. Delays would increase, as you see there, by sixty percent or a hundred percent delay for A M or P M. And as you would expect, you'd start to see more and more traffic divert to those roadways that are grade separated currently in and near the city. When we look at actual delays, we, we can look at each location and project out the, the time delays at each location for the years twenty seventeen, twenty twenty, twenty thirty, and A M and P M. Specifically, when you get into the, at the crossings, and we start to look at the queuing, you can see that, this is a sample of what would happen at virtually every location is the queues do no, no longer would clear once you're running twenty trains per hour. So you'd have continual backup during the peak hour, peak hours that were studied. So you have trains running so frequently that there's not enough open gate time for them to clear. We found that consistently. As, if you look at the level of service that most are used to seeing and hearing, virtually everything goes to a level of service F by twenty thirty, with the exception being Meadow in the, in the morning is an E. So I don't think that's, there's any surprises there that by twenty twenty-five is gonna be really bad. So we, we all kind of know that. We have some numbers to prove that with the analysis. So we looked at what options there are, and as I said, there's the five options at four crossings. So there's, there's a large range of scenarios that can be considered and have been discussed over the years. And so what we did is, is identify six potential mix and match options just to get a flavor for what happens to the traffic and what you'd expect it to do. And so what this table shows is the existing condition on the far left column shows the, the crossings in which are grade separated, which are not, which are at grade. Then we look into the six scenarios, and starting at the first scenario column, you can see wherever it's, it's green, it's changed from existing. So as we walk down, just sample scenario number one, we would, this scenario looks at closing Palo Alto, Churchill, and Meadow, and widening Embarcadero to a four lane, a full four lane roadway, and grade separating Charleston. And then if you go all the way to, and that's kind of the, that would be the most severe change in terms of reducing access across. And then the, the most significant would be scenario six, where you look at grade separations at Palo Alto, Meadow, Charleston, and widening of Embarcadero. So you can see, we tried to, to put a range, and then the four in between are different measures of that. Again, this analysis is really intended to allow some comparison opportunities to occur. So we look at scenario one, where it's the most constrained, and again, no real surprise, you'd see a significant increase in what the arrows show. The bigger the arrow, the more increase of, of vehicles on those corridors. So you'd see traffic being diverted to Embarcadero, Oregon, and, and south. Charleston would pick up a lot with a grade separation. That would be the one. If you looked at the option where, or the scenario where we grade separate most of the roadways, you then see significant increases more evenly distributed across the city for all of the different roadways. Again, as you'd see, but this starts to give numbers, put numbers into where the vehicles would go. On a more visual sense in terms of impacts to roadways, this, this chart is a fairly common traffic analytical chart that, where it's red, that shows the increase in traffic. Where it's green, it shows a reduction in traffic. So you can see where, how the traffic patterns change, both at the railroad and in adjacent streets and corridors in the model. So again, when you open Charleston up in scenario one and you close most everything, then it not only affects Charleston, but the roads to and from. And then similarly, for scenario six, you can see there is quite a bit of diversion in parallel routes to the rail to find the new locations. So you start to see greater traffic impacts in the city and quite a few reductions of, of traffic on many of the roadways when you open up those. So traffic patterns would definitely be adjusted throughout the city if that were to occur. So this table is, is really the, the summary of what happens at each road, roadway. So we have the four at-grade crossings in the left column, excuse me, and what happens to the traffic if, depending on the, the change, whether it remains at grade, whether it's closed, or it's grade separated. And without reading through all of that, you know, the, the summary is, if you leave them as is, it's going to be as we showed at the beginning. If you open it up, you will pull traffic into it. And then if you grade separate, that And then if you grade separate, that, that's the most change you'll see. So I don't know if you want to have any questions on that at this point, but that is the summary.
Can I ask a question? Just on the last couple of slides?
Yep.
If you go, the previous one, previous two, I guess, that one and the pre, so that one and the previous one. So if you add, no, no, that's, this one, scenarios one and six.
Mm-hmm.
So if you add those numbers up, you get an increase of 2,800 cars on the other streets? And if you go to the next one, you get an increase of 2,550 cars on the other streets. I mean, how come they're not the same?
These, these are the changes on these streets?
Yeah.
It's not the, it's not the total to, to the whole system?
It's not the total diversion?
Right.
Okay.
Right. These are just looking at the changes on these particular corridors.
So we have one member of the public that wants to speak?
Yeah, I had Eric. Same question that Eric had. Is it just because you're not, you're calculating, the traffic's going somewhere else and you're not showing where that traffic going?
Right. Right, yeah. There's, there's other minor diversions elsewhere too, but we're showing the major corridors and what happens on the corridors ever.
So a little goes on San Antonio, a little on Oregon or something like that.
So this is if we do all the separations?
This is the ma, yes, this is along with doing the, what's called the maximum accessibility.
So there, there's a couple of points I want to make, but there is another section to the presentation, how bicycle and pedestrian mobility.
Bicycle.
So do we want to take questions on this now and then do the bike, ped?
One quick question too, I want to take. On Churchill, so what I took out of this was, there's a large effect on Churchill if we close, not if we close it, there's little effect if we remain at grade, and there's little effect if we grade separate it. So it didn't seem worth grade separating it, the traffic, that it actually seemed a reason to close it.
So one of, one of the points I wanted to make is that we did not test grade separating Churchill. None of the six scenarios includes grade separating Churchill, and that's something we, I think we need to do moving forward, is do additional tests. And I don't, and that was, you know, when we developed the scenarios, it was very, you know, there's many different options, so we ended up not testing an option that had Churchill grade separated. We've also noted that recently, we've discovered that some of the data that was collected to supplement existing data was collected on a day that was a staff development day for PAUST. So we're going to update those traffic counts and then rerun the model as appropriate. So that's, those are two things that we're going to incorporate moving forward into this, this white paper that will continue to evolve over the next several months.
Just a question. Yeah, this could be kind of technical and then we'll come back, but yeah.
This'll be that way. I mean, when we, when we think about this stuff, we sort of worry about traffic diversion onto, you know, Embarcadero and, or Astrodaro and so forth, right? But the other axis that we, we worry about is what's going to happen to essentially the capacity of Alma Street, okay, when you get all these closures?
Yeah, we can't really.
What's going to happen to the capacity of Alma Street when we got all these closures and not closures? Did you guys model that at all in, in this, in, on these slides? Is that modeled at all or is that?
It, it reflects on, on these in terms of how Alma has changed, and we definitely have that in the model. So, so we can look at that, any particular scenario?
No, it's just if you, if you close off Meadow, for example, so that means you're not going to be interrupting Alma 20 times an hour.
Right.
Right, at that intersection, so you assume that sort of the capacity would change, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And we have that in the model. Again, there are, there are so many different scenarios and, and places to look at. We can look at any of them, and, and these are samples of what's in the report, so any of these graphs are in, in there for all six scenarios, and there's, there's broader summaries and broader data.
So an interesting takeaway from this graphic is that as the crossings of the rail corridor become more fluid, it looks like more people gravitate to El Camino versus Alma.
Sort of, right. Yeah. Should we go to the public or is burning question?
It's not burning, but it's kind of related to Eric's.
Go ahead.
Sure, so I, I just think the diversion impacts are really important under any of these scenarios, and it would be nice to just see some like tabling of that, because I think there's, I don't know how to say it, but we're certainly going to see those impacts in Embarcadero, Oregon, et cetera, El Camino, under any of the scenarios. It'd be nice to see those tabled out. Okay, I may have some other questions later on.
So as we move through the alternatives analysis process, we'll be able to remodel, because now that we have the model built and we'll update the, the data that we collected, we'll be able to run, you know, any scenario that we want foreseeably.
Great, let's go to the public. Two speakers, Elizabeth at Lexus and then Nadia and Nia.
Okay, so we have extensive comments and they're in your packet, I believe. If you turn, I'm not sure what page it is exactly, if we, before we get started, go to those, it'd be great. So we have serious, I mean, I think on one level, we have some serious problems with this study that, that we need to think about, but it has helped us, I would actually say, understand more about how traffic actually flows in Palo Alto. Sometimes when a model fails, you can actually learn something, because why is the model failing? So let's go to why, why, you know, I, Adrian asked for tabling of this data.
So if I could just interject, that's packet page 206. The card comments begin on packet page 206.
Thank you. Thanks. Yeah, so we can get to that. Everybody, is it possible, pull that up or no?
We have it, I would just go ahead.
Okay, just for the people in the audience, okay, so as, as Matt McDonald mentioned, they, to do the traffic diversion, they use the City of Palo Alto Traffic Model, which is really the VTA model. And while this model is useful for one main purpose, which is to understand like the number of cars that are traveling to and from Palo Alto, in Matt McDonald's own tests, it failed validation to actually understand the distribution of that onto local streets. And we actually, if we look back, the, this model was originally developed by Hexagon for the comprehensive plan, and they also did a validation test of the model for distribution of that traffic. So they sort of know, the model kind of has a pretty good idea, like, you know, 10,000 people want to travel north, but they really have no idea whether they're going to take El Camino, Alma, whether they're going to take Middlefield. They have no idea which street people are going to take, and when I say no idea, I'm exaggerating a little bit, but we can see it clearly that it doesn't just fail, like everything's a little higher, a little low. It really does not understand why anybody would take a road like Churchill. And so if you actually look at the page, this comes straight from the report that Matt McDonald actually did, and this is one reason why it shows that Churchill doesn't do anything or matter. You can, if you look at that page, it predicts that literally only 40 or 50 people would take Churchill. That's today, that believes that the, that only 40 or 50 people would take that. So the only reason somebody would be on Churchill would probably be because they lived on the road. So then we ask the question, okay, the model has failed, it's not working, so the question is then, like, why do we decide? If it doesn't understand why people are taking streets right now, how on earth can we expect it to think about what would happen if people got diverted from that? If it doesn't know why it's taking them in the first place, why is it going someplace else? So on Churchill, we ask the question, like, so assuming there is wisdom in crowds, that there is actually quite a lot of traffic coming on and off of Churchill, like, why do people take Churchill, right? Like, they're not totally dumb, like, they're not just lost European tourists, right? Which we do see on biking on Alma. But, so then you start to ask the question, and then you start to see how transportation, the network in Palo Alto works. And the problem is this, is that at University Avenue and Embarcadero, both of those grade separations were done with the idea of getting people just straight across town. That was the idea, is to get people from, you know, from not even 101, just get them all the way across to Stanford, right? And they were not, they threw in turn movements as kind of an added bonus. And what they did is they made it, if you're on the Stanford side of Alma and you want to go south on Alma, they turn what should normally be, if you're, if you're headed like south on Alma and you want to go this way, normally a right turn is the safest possible turn you can, you can do. But what happens is that at both University Avenue and at Embarcadero, it turns a, a right turn into an unprotected left turn across multiple lanes of traffic. There are numerous, is it possible to, took a little while to get going with this stuff, just, it took a wa, it took, you know, we see lots of accident data at the University Avenue crossing, we see less in Embarcadero, but that's because people find it so unsafe they don't even use it. That is why people are using Churchill. They're not using Churchill to go across town, and you can see that in years of data. There's very few people on the one side of Churchill, lots of people on this side of Churchill, they're using it for turn movement. So if we're thinking about how to even replace Churchill to close it, adding, it's not about adding a lane to Embarcadero, it's about finding a safe way for people to make turns on and off of Alma. So, I mean, I think we have, at some level, this is highlighted for us, like, kind of a failure in our process, going back to the rail study, going back even, I'm not going to say the comp plan, but like, like, we're not understanding how traffic flows or how it moves. I mean, we were wondering why there is so much traffic on, it's asymmetrical traffic on the Alma Palo Alto. It doesn't just reverse, you know, in the morning, it's not just the opposite of what happens in the afternoon. And we could not figure it out until we saw the Stanford data, which showed us that basically it is such, it is so bad here in the afternoons, that people are using that road to take El Camino to points much, much further north, which is a very different pattern than what's suggested by this model, which thinks that everybody's just using it to kind of shortcut on Palo Alto Avenue or something to go down and go back. I mean, I have no idea what it's doing, but, but this model doesn't work for understanding why people take roads, and we shouldn't use it to think about how people would use roads if one of these roads were closed. We do need to understand this, and this is the question, like, this model is not, we can't just go back and fix it. It is concerning that data was taken on a school holiday, the calendar is online, I'm not sure why we're paying for that, I would just throw that one out there. But we do have data from Stanford, we have other kinds of stuff. We need to understand how people move and why they move and where the safety issues are, we need to think about Alma, the issues with left turns. I mean, we're just at the beginning of this.
Can I ask a question? Elizabeth, if it's short. You, you talked about the asymmetry.
Yeah.
On, on intersections in the morning and afternoon of eastbound and westbound. I noticed that too. So why is that?
Okay, so this is our.
If it's short, I don't want to take.
No, no, I mean, I think we figured it out. It really is that because of what's going on at Willow, I mean, literally out on the Dunbarton Bridge, that in the morning, when people are coming in, it's the people on the East Bay who have just this whole mess of people trying to get onto 880 just to go to normal places, to get onto the Dunbarton, and I think, I'm going to guess, they have terrible traffic in the morning that's worse than their, their afternoon traffic, you know, people returning. So we have the same kind of thing here, and it's not just, it's Willow Road, it's, clearly there are some issues in Crescent Park going on, there are some other kinds of stuff going on, and that is so bad. I mean, you're getting through, the Stanford data shows like, you're getting through like 100 cars an hour on University Avenue in the afternoon, 100, okay? Whereas in the morning, you're getting through like 800, okay? So, so it is so bad that people just in the afternoon, so first, it's just a right turn so they can get out of here. So people who work in downtown Palo Alto are taking El Camino to go home if they live north, and they're going far. They're going, you know, they might turn eventually at, you know, Whipple, I mean, like, they're going far up El Camino, and they're, they're coming in the morning, they're coming 101 and then up University. So they're returning, they're doing like the four sides of the triangle, but, but that's not what this model is showing.
You think it's people going one way on Alma and a different, in the other direction on El Camino?
Yes, that's right, that's right.
Okay.
So I have a quick question. First, honestly. I really appreciate, yeah, I really appreciate the work you guys did on this. So if this model doesn't work, I mean, I don't think there are better models. I mean, so what do, I mean, what do you, it's one thing to come here and say it doesn't work.
There is better data. There's better data.
So we put better data in, then is the model going to work? Is that what I heard from you?
Well, you're not going to use this model for that. I mean, it's never going to work for this.
So what's the solution?
So the solution is this, there is actual data that shows us how people travel. There's Waze data, there's data that MTC has that comes from the Garmins. First, we need to see how people are actually moving, and then you're going to do a reasonable, you know, from that, I think we can get an understanding first, this, you know, I hadn't ever thought about this, I've never seen it in a city presentation, that there are no safe turns onto Alma, for instance, right? I mean, that's like, that's acute, I mean, I don't know, I think it's.
Look, you're right, I drive to Churchill and I make my left turn from, no matter where I am in North Palo Alto, or I take Oregon, and even Oregon, I don't mind getting on.
That's right. So I do think, I mean, we have, we're starting to get enough data that if you start to see that also, right, to actually see how people are traveling, what are these loops that they're doing, you'll figure out how they're, what happens if that closes, right? I mean, you can put it into, we could work with Google, you can work with somebody, you can close off a street and say what happens, and Google will tell you how people, how it will recommend you travel, right? We can figure this out. So I mean, I think you can get a sense of it, but I also think that just understanding this is very important to fixing some of the issues. I mean, Crescent Park really does need, something has to happen there, it's very weird what's going on there. But, I mean, you also start to see this impacts, what's going on with Stanford, what's going on with everything else. I mean, we're very connected, you know, we're, we're creating problems for, you know, what's going on in Crescent Park is creating problems for Menlo Park and other places, right? I mean, it's, it's very connected. But I think first, just getting a sense of how things are actually flowing. I think it will be fairly obvious what's going to go on. Now, there's a second issue which we didn't even get to, which is the issue with, I believe that they, for the intersection even, we used a data source, we use a model which we know, because Caltrain did this at first, they used that software to try and do the grade preemptions, and it doesn't do grade preemptions in the software, so there's a different software you have to use. But I also think, going back to this, like, it's going to be really bad, but one of the things that I actually see the need is people don't understand what hap, because they're, normally in the rest of the world, the big problem with trains coming through, and this also drives what people think of as improving train safety, it's different here. We have different issues with the trains. In the rest of the world, they have a few incredibly long freight trains, right, that can take eight minutes or nine minutes to get through, so you're, it's like having a really, really long red light. People do dumb things at these intersections. We have less people doing dumb things to jump the light, we, I mean, that's, we have people who don't understand, they get confused, they get stuck, but we have a ton of trains coming through, and we have a ton of busy kinds of things, so it's this interruption to light signals, it's this effect of not being able to synchronize Alma. Some kind of work that actually simulates and shows what happens in an hour, like, with train preemption and the randomness, how that, how that limits capacity, how that limits people coming through. I mean, Josh can probably talk about how much, what's the difference on Alma between being able to synchronize lights and not being able to synchronize lights? I think those kinds of things, so that people in town start to understand what is the impact of train preemption is going to be more valuable than, you know, we can throw out some numbers that are scary, I mean, it's bad, like, it will be very bad, right? Like, but, but we need to use the right software, and I think just more helping people understand the issue is, is a big deal.
So, so we have Nadia, and then we also have Richard Brand.
Hi, so I have a couple of suggestions, since you're looking for actual suggestions. So what Elizabeth is explaining is that the model basically assigned, takes the city, draws it in four quadrants, and, and sort of assigns it to the fastest route in each of the four quadrants, at a simple level, that's kind of what it does. So as she's explaining, it's not really going to work for what we have. My understanding from talking to Josh is that MTC has what's called INRICS data, which is basically the information that we get from Garmin and Waze and stuff, so you could actually spend some money hopefully and have us literally visualize exactly what is happening current day, to get to what Elizabeth is saying. The other thing is, my understanding is that Google also has data, obviously from their Android users, they can figure out who's driving and who's walking, but they couldn't figure out who's biking, and they actually approached the City of Palo Alto to work with us, to ask for our bicycle data so they could validate their own travel models. So, you know, my understanding is also, we got this INRICS data, for example, and we didn't know what to do with it because we don't do data analytics as a city. So this seems to me like a great opportunity to maybe involve, you know, our CTO or use other people in the city, or, you know, maybe our own citizens who may work at, I don't know, large data analytics companies that we might have in our borders, right? I mean, I think we can find residents. I will just say, we put out a call on Nextdoor, asking for a data visualization guru, which I'm sure you probably are wondering, I'm not even sure what that is. We got 13 responses. We knew one of them, 12 were complete people that we'd never met before, who turns out who work for actual professional traffic data modeling things, were like, you know what, I usually do my work with LA and DC and whatever, but I live here and I would love to volunteer my time, how can I help? So that's the kind of stuff that I think in a, in a real true CSS process, we could be pulling from our citizens and figuring out where people can help us. Because to what you were asking, we have real data. I think the planning world is just used to do, using models, right? That's just kind of how it's always been done, and technology has moved faster. We can actually see now, if you were watching Waze live, you could see what happened when that light at Oregon failed on Halloween, right? Like, you could watch it happening, I think we can use that. I just want to get, see if we can have the consultants, you know, confirm directly that number one, Synchro does not, Synchro is the software that they use, can't actually calculate train, train preemption, which is part of the problem with that model. And two, that it doesn't actually highlight Churchill as an actual important part of the network, which we already know has 15 cars a day at peak hour, so obviously, we all know as people who live here that it's important. So, if they want to answer that.
Fifteen cars?
The model said there's fifty cars, but at peak, my understanding was there's fifteen hundred cars, right, at peak hour? So, clearly... Or, okay, I'm, but, yeah. It's more than fifty. How's that? So...
Thank you. Yeah, Richard.
Yeah, Richard Brand again. Uh, I would briefly, just want to point out, I guess it's not showing on the screen. In Churchill Avenue, if it's closed, it says, Embarcadero Road, and, and I agree that the, yeah, we're on, okay, that the traffic would be possibly diverted. However, it's not going to operate satisfactorily. The problem with Embarcadero is not the three lanes. It's the succession of lights for Town and Country and the high school. So, the backup, either both eastbound and westbound, is not constricted by the three lanes. It's really that succession of, of stoplights. I, I see it every day, and it backs up onto Embarcadero East and for the westbound, and vice versa, onto El Camino. So, I just want to point that out.
So, I know we have the bike and ped information as well, but maybe we should stop and discuss this first?
Yeah.
So, any questions, comments? You know, I have quite a few, but I was going to...
I'll leave it off. Um, so, I guess just playing on this thread of kind of more granular, call it real-time or person-level data, where do we stand on that? And what would it take for the city to kind of integrate or build some model based on some of that data?
I mean, there is a model, a meso-model that's kind of in between Syncro and the travel demand model that we use. Um, you know, it would cost money to develop something like that and time. Um, I mean, there are a lot of, you know, very insightful comments coming from the public regarding the modeling. And, um, you know, that's one of the flaws of this type of regional travel demand model. So, what we've done is, we've done the intersection level modeling and then the regional kind of level modeling. There is a, you know, a way to model that, um, at a more local street level. Um, it would require a lot more data collection, building an additional model. And that's something we could look at doing if we start to go down the road where that's something that would, you know, inform our decision-making.
Sure. So, I guess, I guess just a question for my colleagues is...
I just, just to, a couple of things on that. One, it was mentioned INRICS, all the other, that data's readily available. It's routinely used. It's part of, part and parcel to what we do now in modeling. We take that into account. Um, but I would go back to, um, and, and just what the purpose of this study was and is, is to help make a decision on what project it is you want to then analyze in more depth. We, we would expect to use different analytical tools to streamline and maximize a design, not Syncro, but for assessing variations between options. Syncro's an appropriate tool because it tells you the same level of information at all the different locations. So, you can get a feel for more, less, greater, less. Um, if you want to know the detail, uh, yes, there are more refined models you can go to. To do that detail for all of these scenarios at every location, what, what happens at Churchill, if you do one thing at Charleston, another thing at Meadow, and then if you do different things at each of those, to do that, that would be extremely involved process. Of course, we can do that, but I'm not, what we're trying to do is help you make a decision. Um, but, so that's, those two things, we do, that data's readily available. It's readily used in all of our modeling.
So, I think, I think something we need to get a handle on here, folks, is, a model isn't meant to just represent reality and show everything that happens. A model is made for some kind of problem, some kind of solution. And I'm not sure we quite have that nailed down on the circulation study. To some of the speaker's points, I think you may have it right about, you know, people using Alma and El Camino differently and going up north and things like that. I think that's one set of concerns. Though, there may be some other patterns that we're not yet identifying. Um, and then, third, if we are interested in kind of a more granular, realistic model in some ways, um, the ways I see us going about it is we could get staff to go do it and pay some money to do that. We could maybe ask our public to work on something. Third, we could be looking at like a Google, like Sidewalk Labs or something, and seeing what they have and if they'd be willing to help us out. Um, so, I don't know. Those are just some thoughts. But I, I think we should keep, let, let's not just try to model reality. Let's figure out, like, what's the problem we're trying to solve with our model. I think that's something we should keep an eye on. Yeah.
So, yeah, so my concern is that, you know, I think we need to clearly put forth the questions we're answering. And then we need to, so if we know what questions we want to ask, then the question is, does the model meet those questions? And that's where the confusion in my mind is. So, you know, when I look at Churchill, for instance, you know, we've talked about closing it, not closing it. We've talked about, you know, separating it. We haven't done that modeling yet, separating it. I mean, I think it's what question are we trying to pose? And I do think that we have not focused on the turning issues onto Alma when we look at that. I, I think we really need to. Because the more I think about it, I mean, I always use Churchill to turn onto Alma, every time. If I want to go across, I often use Churchill as well, frankly, because it's closer than... And getting on Embarcadero, there's, and I think Richard Brand is correct. I mean, you know, we have not solved the Embarcadero issues out there. And I don't know, we, we voted to make some improvements there and put a bike lane there, and I, I voted against it. I, um, I still think we're going to have huge problems on Embarcadero. So, I guess the question is, how do we, how do we ask the right questions? And what are the goals that we want to achieve with this? And I, I don't think we've really narrowed in on that. And, you know, it's, it's obviously disturbing when you say, here's the model, and the model says, this is what happens at Churchill. And it's obviously not what happens in Churchill when we continue to use the model. I think it's okay if you say, these are the flaws in the model upfront. We should not use the model to make this decision. I don't want to have charts up here. I mean, what I'd be really unhappy with is if we had charts and data and it said, you know, because what I read from this, frankly, is, you know, hey, we should definitely leave Churchill open and not close it. Because what's the downside to closing it? I mean, what's the upside in closing it? You know, it, all it does is divert traffic and make life more difficult. And then we basically wouldn't be able to turn there. So, I, I just want to make sure that anything we have, I don't make a bad decision because I look at the data. I look at the charts. I look at what you give us. And we, that's my only concern.
So, my, my reaction was kind of similar. So, I was going to say, whether you can use the model, it's a first-order model, obviously, right? Whether you can use the model sort of depends on what question you're asking. So, it seems to me the question on Churchill is pretty simple, which is if we close Churchill, are we going to have a catastrophe on Embarcadero, right? And, and maybe the model is good enough to answer that. Maybe it's not. And if it's not, you know, do we have to throw it out? Or is it possible we can supplement it with some other data? Because we're only talking about four intersections. I mean, I bet we don't have a hundred of these questions that we have to answer, right? I bet it's a relatively small number. Um, and then the other piece is, to, to Councilmember Sharf's question, Eric Sharf's question, right, is, what's the downside of leaving it open? Well, I think the downside of leaving it open is on Alma Street, right, which is, you're going to, the rails are going to go up and down, and stoplight's going to go off twenty times an hour or something like that. So, I think you have to consider that, too. But so, but that seems like a fairly simple question.
Just a couple of comments related to that. These are all really, you know, insightful comments. And, you know, we've had a lot of discussion about this, uh, you know, on the project team as well. Um, this model is the model that's used, you know, to predict demand for major roadway projects, transit projects. Um, it's the de facto, you know, model for the region. So, it's not, it, it, but that being said, it's, you know, our project is a little bit different than a lot of the projects that are modeled using this software. So, um, I think we're going to have to continue to make tweaks and, you know, add data points. And, but I don't think we can, you know, throw this one out and look for something better at this point. I think we can continue to enhance this. And we just need to think about what role this analysis is going to play in our decision-making. I don't think it needs to, you know, be the be-all and end-all of, of how we make a decision. But it's, it's, you know, it is a valuable data point.
So, if we close, if we close Churchill, are we going to have a traffic catastrophe on Embarcadero?
So, the next step would be to take, you know, to continue to refine this and then import the data from the model into the intersections, the signalized intersection on, on Embarcadero, and use Syncro to model the delay at those intersections. Um, you know, we, this is, like I said at the beginning, this is just the first step. We built the model. We tested a couple of scenarios. We're going to have to continue to refine it, add data, and then derive, you know, micro simulations from, from this model as we start to look at things like what the impacts to Embarcadero would be.
So, Josh, you, you hit it right on the head of my concern. My concern is basically, and I, and I'm not saying you're doing this, but my concern is, is that you're used to using models. You use the model, and you don't run it through, oh, wait, does this make sense? Are we asking the right questions? I mean, I, I mean, I think the model is just a tool. I worry that, I think I just need some comfort level, that you're not model-bound and you're not looking at the models and, and stuck in the models as opposed to, you know, hey, these are the questions. This model's useful for some things. It's not useful for other things. That's really the comfort level, I think, that the group needs.
That's, that's exactly what we're saying, is this is one, yeah, one, um, information point that we're going to have in this process. And it doesn't take into account things like people's uncomfort turning left off of the ramp from Embarcadero. Um, a model's not going to predict those kind of things. Um, so I think, you know, we're going to have to use our own judgment collectively as a community as we move through this and have a gut check on, you know, what this is telling.
I never make that left turn, having done it a few times.
So, I mean, if I could just, on, on that particular issue in relative to modeling, what, what you do when you, when you use the model is you, and we haven't got down to that level of detail, but these are the, if we ask that specific question, we would model and we would take counts of how many people make that turn. We build that in the model and then see what happens. So, you would take that into account. But secondly, the, the question that I think is what we'd like to know is what questions do you need answered? And that's, and then we can answer those. We can answer that, your question, if we know what all the other parameters are that you're, go into that assumption relative to all the other pieces. Because the answer's different depending on what you do at the extremities.
I guess what, what I'm not hearing is, and we do have counts on Churchill, and you show how the model doesn't model Churchill at all. And I don't hear you guys saying, we're not going to use this model for Churchill. So, I, I think that's the disconnect for me, is that, I mean, there's a lot of disclaimers in here about how that data was not appropriate. And this is one of the four intersections we're looking at, right?
So, I think the issue with Churchill, and I'll verify this, is the travel demand model has what are called traffic analysis zones. Those are the, the quadrants that Nadia alluded to. There is, there's actually quite a few TAZs in the city of Palo Alto. Those include the number of jobs, the number of housing units. Um, and then there's a network that's overlaid over the TAZs, and there are nodes and, and links. And the links are roads in the network. Um, those are things like Embarcadero and Alma. Those are roads that are loaded with traffic from the TAZs. There are also things called centroid connectors, which are just points from the TAZ connecting to a road. And I think Churchill is coded, is not coded as a link. Um, because it's a regional model, Churchill is not considered a significant regional roadway. So, one of the things we can do moving forward is looking at whether we can modify that to make Churchill a link and load it properly, like the other arterials are.
Right.
So, that's something we can address moving forward.
Using these conclusions without doing that seems, seems very misleading. And it's almost, I'd like to see, like, Churchill removed from presenting the results.
So, this is a working draft.
Yeah.
It's not a final. We brought it to you as soon as it was available. So, we can certainly, you know, make modifications either to the model and, you know, redo the table or modify the table until we're able to do that.
So, I actually had some, some methodology questions, using this methodology, that I'd like to get to, if that's okay. Um, so, so there was a bunch of Stanford transportation data for the GUP. Did, do we leverage that at all?
This was prepared before the GUP was released. We can do that.
Okay. Um, and, and this discussion about Embarcadero was, was impacts of, like, widening Embarcadero or changing those turns, that that wasn't considered at all in the circulation study in, like, future scenarios?
Not, not to the detail of the turns. We did look at adding capacity on Embarcadero.
Okay.
To make it a four-lane rather than a three-lane facility.
Well, it's a first-order thing. You said, I need more cars while you're so...
And I, I think one of the important things to understand is a lot of delay in urban areas comes from signalized intersections. So, even if you add another lane to Embarcadero and you don't increase the capacity at the signals, you're not really going to gain much.
But you modeled increased capacity, however that...
We modeled another lane through the tunnel.
It's, it's a first-order thing, right?
So, on, on page thirty-six, um, you talk about the twenty trains per hour. And I, I just wanted to understand it. It looked like, you're saying if they're evenly spaced, then we get a train, we get a train every six minutes. And, and if I understand that right, that's like the optimal condition where the trains are, like, passing perfectly at time. Shouldn't, isn't, shouldn't we look at the worst-case scenario of a train every three minutes instead of every six minutes?
We, we typically do not model the worst, worst-case scenario. Um, you know, somebody mentioned a breakdown in a signal. Um, we, we typically don't model those. Those are events that you can look at independently if you'd like to do, have some, some backup plans.
Well, it's not even worst-case. It's likely. There's, there's no way they're going to cross at all four intersections.
Well, we, we, we have the twenty in there. We don't assume they all cross at, at the same time.
So, how do you, how do you get six-minute intervals at all four intersections with twenty trains an hour?
I think it's three minutes.
I think the ultimate build-out is a train every three minutes.
That's what I'm asking. If we look at page thirty-six, it says twenty trains per hour spaced at six-minute.
So, in 2025, assuming high-speed rail is operational in 2025, which is a little bit of a stretch now, given where they are, we would have a train every three minutes. That's the bottom bar on this slide.
Okay. So, again, if you guys could just look at this text. It's not what it says.
Okay.
And then there's a question of intersections to analyze. And again, I understand cost, but it seemed like we left out, like, uh, I think some key intersections. So, um, and I see these backups all the time. So, like El Camino Way, El Camino and Arastodaro, El Camino and Churchill. Um, university, was university included in this model? I guess it was. But, um, I, I mean, we're looking at these crossings with the rail, but within a block of either direction. You know, when you talk about these infinite queues, um, I guess we just said it was an infinite queue, but we didn't really say what was going to happen on, like, El Camino or, again, something like El Camino Way, where it fell all the way up from the train to, to El Camino, right? Um, so, I guess, how should we think about that in these circulation studies?
I think, you know, there's two ways we could handle that. We could add those in and rerun the models, the runs that we've already done. Or, moving forward, as we hone in on options for Meadow, for example, we could look at what the impacts would be to adjacent intersections in a more granular fashion.
I mean, as near today, it's basically just going to tell us that, um, you know, doing nothing is not an option.
Yeah, I mean, the, 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 um, questions about the frequency of the trains and whether they're staggered and, you know, regardless of where we end up on that, it's going to be bad in 2025. So, if we don't do anything. So, I don't know that we need to spend too much time analyzing, you know, whether it's a train every two minutes, a train every one minute, or...
But if we do put in the separations, like, do we create a bottleneck on El Camino or something, something we're going to have to look at, right?
Yes. And, you know, the additional traffic that's drawn to a new grade separation, does that then impact adjacent intersections because there's more demand?
So, if you, if we could look at page eighty-six, um, limitations of the model, I think this was a lot of our discussion. Um, and maybe I'm looking at an older, yeah, well, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the one from November eighth. But it's, uh, section three-point-one of the travel demand models and the demand model validation report. So, I'm looking at, uh, I'm looking at this document. Yeah.
Scenarios specifications. Packet page one-fifty-nine? Could be different, three-point-one. One-sixty-nine? Three-point-one scenarios specifications.
No, it's, so it's this document, the, and then three-point-one, three-point-two.
Okay, so it's packet page one-fifty-one?
Yes. So, the, this three-point-two and three-point-three limitations of the model, it's not an intersection-based model. It's not intended to address this level of detail. This is the whole issue we're talking about with Churchill, right? That basically you're saying the model doesn't cover Churchill.
The, the model tries to predict the movements between TAZs using the network. So if a street's not in the network, it's not gonna load that street.
Okay. And then, and then three-point-three talks about using GIS, it's not built on GS data, and there, and in the last sentence, the model forecast, need to be examined for how that can be used for operational analysis, so, again, I, I think this was kind of buried and, and it's coming up now, but it's, again, what, what questions could we answer with this, this model? And I think you guys recognize the limitations, but it was kind of buried is probably the message. And then, sorry, I'm off on the pages. It's a little further back, I guess, three-point-six, you know, this table of the counts. So again, when you, when you look at Churchill and it says, you know, we count four-hundred-and-thirty-two, but the model shows forty-six, you know, to me, it just, it just said, we should ignore the results for Churchill.
It, it, it actually, what I would read into that is that we need to collect additional data and look at how Churchill's programmed in the travel demand model and then try to get those to be more in line.
Yeah, when you say additional data, we, we have these counts that are already much higher than what the model shows, right? So do we already have the data, it's just changing, changing the model or using a different model?
Modifying the model so that the model better reflects actual conditions.
Okay. So I was, over Thanksgiving, I was cleaning up a bunch of council paperwork, and I came.
You didn't read it while you were cleaning.
No. But I, but I came across the Scoposervices for the circulation study, and I just wanted to call out some things and see if they're gonna be included in the final report. So, so we talked about liaising with high-speed rail and using any data they had, I don't know if they have more detailed data, do they, do they, or?
We have, when we started, we, we worked with their data, we'll double back with them, see if they have updated.
Okay. Did we call out for a gap analysis of data flaws? And it seems like that would be really useful, I think that's what we're spending a lot of time talking about.
We, we did that at the beginning, but obviously this one specific location needs to be reconsidered.
Okay. Bike and pet counts, which you've added, cumulative development proposal impacts as well as results of our comp plan, which we just finished, is that being considered?
Yeah, that's in the Horizon year for the model.
Those big data, those numbers?
Yeah.
We said there were gonna be field observations, and is that gonna happen?
Yes, that's been part of the process to date.
Okay. And then towards the end, there was qualifying the, the total benefits in terms of, you know, I guess the different options, right? So.
Right, at, where, again, where we are right now is trying to develop data to help make decisions when, when, I mean, if I could reflect back to the first presentation today, one of the first things that happens, if you recall, they went from six to two alternatives, and they could analyze those two alternatives much more precisely. I think that's kind of, you know, we're kind of at that, we still have not only the six, but many more than the six on the table, and so it's kind of, you know, we can, we can certainly do that, but to put that into context is, is more challenging with.
So I guess it'd probably be good having a conversation about when we do that, right?
Yeah, if we were to do a benefits analysis now, we could, you know, calculate the benefits of grades separating all four, or two.
Yeah.
Or three.
Well, I am concerned at the community meetings, like, there's this talk about, oh, if we separate, we're gonna attract more cars, but without any of this benefit analysis. And again, and some of those are if we grade separate one place and none of the others, which is probably an unlikely scenario. So I do think maybe the, the all-four grade separated, or maybe some, just even a high-level estimate on benefits would help too, because right now it's kind of all impacts and no benefits in these discussions. And then, you know, again, simplifying some of these charts with kind of intersection and travel times, I, I didn't, and maybe I missed a lot of stuff here, but we talked about in the original scoping, looking at travel times across, you know, for different, different trips, is that something we would do later on?
We can pull that out for these six scenarios.
Okay. Okay, so, you know, and again, I would like to echo the, the comments about looking at Garmin or Urban Engines or some of these other kinds of GIS-type data. It would be good to know, 'cause, 'cause I think more of these data sources coming available, how, how real expensive are they really? And are there opportunities to work with some of these companies early on in kind of pilot modes where we might get data at lower cost?
So MTC has already bought all of the Inrex data, and Inrex is a consolidator of Garmin data and other GPS, and that's available to us. The, the issue would be finding somebody that could analyze that for us and present it in a way that's usable and legible, and Nadia, I think, had a great idea about using some of our local resources to make that happen.
Okay. Great.
Could I make a comment?
Yep.
So I don't know, I hope you guys are feeling good. You know, I, I sort of am feeling that I'm gonna be stuck in a traffic engineering coloquium for the next two years, which is like my worst nightmare. So I mean, that's my disclosure from my starting point. But I, I do know something about how to help drive public processes to make the best decisions possible that are as much about being able to translate and communicate between different realms, and I, I feel like we're kind of off track in that regard. I mean, I think, and, and I think all of the comments about the questions, right, are, are really good, except we can't even do a typical Palo Alto question process where we have twenty different questions from all over the place and we just put them together and say, go answer these twenty questions, because some of them may be contradictory questions, some of them may be off point. I, I just think we need to think about some way where we can also focus some of the committees where, which the staff and consultants have to support, that is a little bit slower and more focused about, one, clarifying the problem definition explicitly, so we're all sort of clear. And even so, when we get comments from other folks, we can also say, are, are you redefining the problem or are you on board with the same problem? And secondly, how do we identify the core questions that really do need to be answered in some way that, before we go off and do some of the work, the committee, I think, in one sense, understands, here's the problem, here's the kind of questions we clearly want. And then ultimately for the committee to be able to sort of identify the parameters of what are acceptability or the values for the kinds of choices and improvements we're gonna make. So, I mean, I, I'm just left with an impression that between now and the council break, that we're going, we need to sort of focus on how we can bring all this back, 'cause I, I mean, even though I think you guys have even asked some very specific technical questions, unless I'm misreading things, I don't think we're on a track to get buy-in about knowing where we're going. I feel like we're moving point to point right now, and we'll get the next bit of information and we're gonna, and there isn't a sense of, of where we're going. And, and I think that's what the whole question's about, getting clear. And, and the last thing I just would say is, we have this, it was interesting, one of the first speakers who spoke talked about the sessions we have that have people who go who don't know much of anything and people who are much more informed and experts. And yet I think the whole challenge that we have in this whole process is that we both need expertise, but then we need the average citizen beginner's mind sort of, folks who are going to have to live with and/or accept politically the choices that you're gonna make. And I think we have to give some more thought to how we bridge that piece of it too, which I think in some ways means that the expertise realm needs to be translated into something that's more understandable by the committee, first of all, but certainly even the public. And then even the comments or criticisms we get need to get more focused in that way. I think your question was right, like, okay, what's the specific alternative? Help us out. Otherwise, I'm quite concerned that we'll be asked to go, and Josh will keep modifying one, one approach in one study, then we'll get criticisms and we'll kind of go, okay, we got the criticisms, we'll try to fix that, but we're never getting to the real directive. And that's what I sort of heard from the committee, I just wanna put it in my own words 'cause I'm feeling that we, we need to go back and figure out, and I think that may mean some schedule adjustments too, I'll have to be honest with you.
I, I mean, I didn't really hear it that way, I thought Eric made some good points, and we're looking at four separations, we had this circulation study, it seems like one of the four was not really analyzed yet, and so.
I think that would be really good if the committee could get also clear, if that's, if, if these are the parameters that we really wanna focus on, then let's be clear about that versus, my impression was we're still jumping around a whole bunch. Maybe I'm wrong.
So I think, I think we're, I think the good thing I'm hearing is we're starting to think about, well, what happens to Embarkadero? I think the point about turn lanes in Alma is, was really good, it's something that's certainly been evolving in my thinking. But yeah, we have four grade steps, we need, if, we, we can't, we're starting to talk about scenarios and trying to get there, but if we don't really have data on Churchill, I think we're uncomfortable about making conclusions, right? And so I guess the question, where do we go from here? I mean, the staff, the staff was asking, you know, are there additional scenarios? I also appreciate, you know, you saying, you know, you're bringing stuff to us in rough form early, so I think part of today is really kind of feedback on how do we wanna refine this, right? I don't think it's, I mean, I think your points are well-taken, I think people have said, what's the problem we're trying to solve? But I do think that there were some real issues with some of the methodology here that we should address. And, and, you know, when we do get into the community, we have a smart community, they're gonna bring up these issues as well, so I don't think we can just skip over it.
I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm just, I'm telling you, I'm not hearing that, that degree of clarity myself. I mean, I understand it, but I mean, I think we need to be thinking about how we're, thinking about how we package this to speak to, let's say, even if you had to speak to the whole city council right now, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be enough for, well, anyway, I, I just, I, I think, I think we need to put more emphasis on how we really get clear at the start of almost every meeting, every presentation. Let's restate, here's the problem we're trying to solve, here's the, here's the approaches we take, very explicitly so that all four of you are at least on the same place, and we know if you ask follow-up questions, we know how to do it. I mean, right now, and this, this no criticism of the committee or any of us, I'm just saying, right now, we got a bunch of stuff, it still feels like it's going into the black box, which is Josh and our transportation folks, we're gonna go back and do some stuff, and we're gonna come back and we're gonna report to you, without ever, as any, building any sense of the context itself, or really what we're trying to achieve and how far we are. So I'm being a little philosophical right now, I apologize for that, but I think that there is some sort of, really kind of focus on policy and clarity we need to do a better job of doing so that the technical issues clearly flow from what the policy directives are that we have. And that's not on the committee, I'm just saying that's some work I think that we need to do on the staff side too. Now, Ed actually is a traffic engineer nearby.
According to the state of California, so.
So it's your fault, Ed.
There you go. Utility player, as, as we like to refer to. So I feel like I oughta be sitting to the left of Jim so I can do the left brain to your right brain, and, so maybe make a, a suggestion, see if this might work in terms of how to proceed. And I, I definitely agree that the discussion of the committee and, and with the committee input and the staff perspectives has been really valuable. So maybe as a little bit of a, a baby step toward a, a next step might be, as was discussed, framing the question. And I think one of the key questions that has come up is, what is really the impact of closing Churchill if that were one of the key scenarios? And as Josh pointed out, that'd be one of the next steps in the modeling analysis. That could be a very useful exercise in reality check going forward, because clearly that's one of the, the key questions that the committee and the council and the community as a whole has on the table with respect ultimately to making decisions on what to do with the rail rights of way, right-of-way and grade separations. So if, if you could kind of bear with me for a second, if staff were able over the, the holiday break and to, after the first of the year, take that step and come back with, what is the modeling exercise? And it's not exclusive to the model, you know, any modeling exercise has the, what the computer spits out and then what the professionals say, well, that's not right, we need to tweak that some so that it actually has some reality to it. But let staff do that with their consultants, go through that step, and then to come back into what I think will, will be, if I could break it into a few phases of what we have ahead of us. So if the, one of the key questions, what is the implications of closing Churchill to autos in particular? You know, we've, we haven't even gotten into the bikes and pets. But to get to that question, ultimately where the committee and the community will need to get our heads around is, one, what are the impacts of closing Churchill? Then, two, what are, how would you mitigate that? Whether it be, you know, the whole left turn, right turn thing, what happens at Embarkadero and elsewhere? And then what are the implications or, of that mitigation? All of which, if you take in sequence, may lead to other questions and other areas of concern or what have you. But in each one of those steps, there will be the basic communication of what is, what is the analysis showing us and needing to reach some level of understanding of that, both in this small group, council, community as a whole. There will be scrutiny to that and disagreement probably on whether there's agreement on what that analysis shows, but that's also a part of the public process. And again, there needs to be a reconciliation of people ultimately saying, yeah, okay, I can understand what it's showing, and either I think it's way off or it's close enough to be able to get to the next step, which is ultimately some decision-making around what the analysis is showing and what implications that has on our interest and willingness to do things like widen Embarkadero, even consider the, the closure further. So I do think that there needs to be a bit of a, a leap of faith or, or bearing with the analytical process to then lead into this community process of, again, we agree with it, we disagree with it, and based upon that agreement or disagreement, what, what is the next step beyond that? I don't know that that's avoidable, quite frankly, and I do believe that if we are able to, to a certain extent, take stock and, you know, again, not just full steam ahead, damn the torpedoes, but to be able to continue to take some steps with the analytical tools that we have and also look at where we might be able to either bring other tools to bear.
So, if I can just up-level a little bit for me, I mean, I actually thought this was really helpful.
Yeah, it did help, yeah.
I thought, in thinking about this problem, appreciate the comments from Card on this. You know, I think this is gonna be a little bit of an iterative process, right? So as far as the sense I get from seeing as you're worried about us getting inserted this, this, you know, endless spiral of, of engineering models for ultimate precision and so forth, and, you know, I'm not terribly worried about that one, I think we're capable of managing our way, managing our process that we don't do that, so, so. I actually thought this is, you know, all things considered, good stuff.
So, let me just, there's two things, actually, I didn't think you were only on the left side of the brain there, actually. But even, even the, I'm, I'm not thinking just about how the committee and the staff are working, I mean, this is ultimately, has to lead to a decision that is not only the council accepts, but the community in some form is ultimately gonna accept, because some of the other, at least in my group of problems and issues are, we're gonna have to get a bunch more money than we have right now in some way, which is gonna mean we're gonna have to have some sort of real support and buy-in ultimately. I'm not saying that that's the, that's, that's the answer. That ultimately means not only do we kind of get to a point, but that we have, we have developed the process itself about how we made the decisions and why, that it will then be much easier to, to communicate those to people who are not, who are not embedded in this process right here, and that's what's gonna be key. And that's, that's what I'm feeling like we need to just build some more discipline and clarity there so that we can get you all on and we can also communicate with the public, even when we have the workshops, they can be even more effective or whatever vehicles we use. So I, I wasn't complaining about today at all, just trying to talk about how about today at all, just trying to talk about how we move forward. One thing I might say with what Ed said is, maybe we do just decide, we'll talk with our experts here, too, do we just, do we take Churchill as just a little case study model for us to demonstrate how, what's an existing condition, what are some of these alternatives, how does that play out, without us having to deal with the dynamism of four, oh, no, four plus three changes? Oh, not just that, there's Willow Road. What, oh, Facebook's going to build stuff, and we're going to have more people coming up university?
So I know Josh wants to catch a train, so...
Oh, no, I'm going to do zipcar, so I'll be fine.
Okay. I was watching the clock there. I was going to try to attempt a motion, and I don't think it's just about Churchill, so I'm going to throw this out there. But so the part of the staff request is whether we should look at some additional scenarios. So I would move that we, we fix the analysis of closing Churchill, that we add a scenario that has four vehicular grade steps, including Churchill, which was not analyzed. We haven't really talked about Palo Alto Avenue, but I would suggest that we maybe evaluate the modeling there considering some of the new projects in Menlo Park, and that we leverage the Stanford GUP transportation data, which is, which is new, if we can use that in the model, or staff can explore leveraging that data. And then the last one is that we, that we move the discussion of the bike-ped effects to a future meeting.
So there's a lot in there. I can't, I don't think we have discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to have some discussion, but, yeah.
Can I just recap the main points I've heard from you? So one is move the bike-ped discussion. Two is include a separation study at Churchill, include Churchill as one of the separations.
Yep.
What was, what were you talking about?
Fix the analysis of closing Churchill based on the data issues.
Wait, I don't know what that means, fix the analysis.
Well, we've heard that the model, in a model like correctly.
We have, we don't know what that means, to fix it. We don't know what that means. So what I heard them, I heard something different of what they already said they were going to do.
Okay.
If you're, I wanted to hear from Josh what they were planning on doing and whether or not that's okay with us, as opposed to go fix it.
So we will focus our attention on the Churchill, the link that's modeled, you know, for Churchill in the travel demand model, and we'll do what we need to do to get it, to validate, to get it to reflect real world conditions, you know, this year. And then we'll assume that, you know, going forward, it'll continue to reflect real world conditions.
Right. And is that what you meant by that? Then what did you mean by, you know, I love the City Manager's suggestion about coming back and using Churchill as a test case and doing that. Is that in there or is that not?
I'm not sure what it means to be a test case. I mean, this is just an early version of this report. So I think we should come back with a refined version of this report.
I'm not defending that suggestion, but I did want to say, my thought of a test case isn't to drive it from beginning to the very end of whatever would happen. It would be a way for us to be able to see how it is that we actually really assess choices and trade-offs in a way that, at least from maybe my dumber perspective, gets easier than looking at matrices that have, you know, unlimited possibilities of combinations almost.
So I like that. But that's how I interpret it. I think that makes sense.
But again, what do we, this is not, this is six scenarios in our circulation report. It's an early draft. So how do we get to an improved draft that includes multiple scenarios?
I think it does include Churchill as a full separation potentially, but I'm not sure where the test case of Churchill goes.
Maybe test is the wrong word.
Yeah.
Maybe a refine, maybe, maybe understanding it as we look at it and hone in on that.
I just think, as Tom just mentioned, we are refining these scenarios. I think one of our comments is Churchill should be considered for that, as should Palo Alto Ave. I'm just not sure where this one stream of, that you guys are getting on.
Well, here's how I thought of it, right? Which is, you know, we had a bunch of discussion on Churchill, okay? We know that our assumptions and predictions of Churchill are not dead nuts inaccurate. Okay, that's very clear, okay? Question is, are we that far away? Are we that far away? I have no idea, right? And so I assumed that what I read in the City Manager's comments is, well, let's try it and let's get a feel for, you know, are we in the ballpark or not in the ballpark and so forth? And that will give us better guidance on where we are on all the other ones, too.
And that's what I...
And then deal with it when you've got multiple variables. I mean...
Pipe clean a little bit.
I associate my counsel with my more articulate colleague. So I'm not even sure we're disagreeing. I think we're saying similar things.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But again, we haven't really, we focused a lot on Churchill. I don't think it's the only issue. And so kind of, I think there may be...
Well, it's clearly not the only issue.
Right.
That would be the overstatement.
So I brought up Palo Alto Avenue. And again, we have, we have some much fresher data, I guess, from the Stanford GUP, so.
I think Palo Alto Ave is the least one we should focus on. I actually don't think we should call that out.
But again, I think, I think we may be missing a lot of the recent changes Menlo Park did, and it may be like Churchill where we're not modeling it correctly. So...
I'd pick one and try to exercise that.
So we're going to get a second draft?
This isn't right, anyway, because Palo Alto is blocked there, so there's not going to be a lot of traffic there.
When you guys say pick one, we're going to have an updated draft, this report that only updates Churchill. Is that what you're suggesting?
I don't even know if it was an updated... I don't mean to mislead you. I'm trying to think ahead to data visualization and ways we start being able to communicate about what happens when we do something at, I mean, I can't imagine a bunch of, and I'm not saying this is just for the general public, going and having this conversation with the general public and showing a chart like this and having it be meaningful at all. We have to at some point to say, for example, here's Churchill, here's the existing thing. We've gone out and looked at why people make decisions and they do stuff. Okay, here, if we go ahead and we make this choice and that choice, here are the implications we see on how cues are going to change. Here's how we're going to see displacement. And that's just one, that's just one correlation.
He's talking about a pretty narrow exercise here, right?
It is.
No, I know. I'm just trying to say that this action item is our circulation study. I think you're talking about our community engagement process. Why are we mixing these together right now?
I also heard criticism from our public, who's also has an expertise about the approaches that we're using ourselves and how do we start using some overlays or other perspectives, all of which are sort of valid. But I know we're going to leave here, and Josh can say we can incorporate them. There's a lot of work that's involved there.
So without a motion, what is staff planning on doing? That's really the key issue. You know, that's what I want to know.
So what I would like to do, based on what I heard today, and this could differ from, you know, what the committee would like us to do, but I would like to add a seventh scenario that includes full grade separation of all four, grade crossings, including Churchill. Run that with updated data. First, we would update the data for the, you know, for using what we have from the GUP and from, we'll do updated counts for Churchill on a day when school's in session. And then I would like to add an eighth scenario that is closing Churchill, and that would be the only change from existing conditions, and run that and see what the results are of that. And that would let us look at what the impacts would be to Embarcadero with updated data from Churchill. And then as we move forward, we're going to continue to model different things as we, you know, explore different alternatives.
And the thing about, so I'm good with that. That's kind of my, was my intent. The only reason I was suggesting moving bike and ped was because of your time constraints. So I don't know if we want to try to continue on that.
I don't know that you want to get too deep in that. It's just basically bicyclists are inconvenienced if you close a crossing and their travel time increases. I mean, there's nothing really groundbreaking in that section. So it's up to you if you want to spend time on that.
So the other thing I'd like to see in these studies, which I thought Burlingame did good, is what are the different times of impact of construction? You know, B was four years and A was, I don't remember, was two years. But I think that's a huge issue. Is what does that look like? And what does that do to our traffic? What does that mean? If it's a 10-year process, a two-year process, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I had a bunch of questions about noise aesthetics, again, but this is a circulation study. So how much do we bring in other, it seems like other topics to me?
Yeah. So just stepping back to kind of focusing on the City Manager's comments here. If we're thinking about this as a public process and where the community input is, this is one piece of that. It's our circulation study. But I like scenario seven, Josh, because it's not precluding any options from our community. And I think that's kind of the important part of this one piece of our input design, that we're not backing anything out yet. And then, yeah, in scenario eight, sure, go look at closing Churchill, but we're also looking at undergrounding or tunneling or whatever we want to do at Churchill as well. And seven, I think that's the important thing.
Yeah, I can just say one thing. I think the mayor's comments were really good. I was thinking about, and that's a whole other future problem, right? Which is, we're going to model all of these alternatives, which are sort of the future completed end state. The reality of it, you guys are going to be living with a more near-term problem of the angry community during the construction process of whatever it is we're doing. And how do we model and figure out ultimately in advance what the, what the traffic shifts and scenarios are going to be as a result of that? That's, that's down the road, but for, depending upon the option, a year, two years, multiples of years, that's going to be the world as we know it in Palo Alto. So something, I think it's, we need to be thinking about that. Because traffic circulation during construction can be an issue, too.
That's what I was going to say. I think that really does impact circulation as we go through this. I mean, if we close, if we were to close Alma, for instance, for four years, that's a huge, you know, issue.
So we, you know, we're going to bring forward a suite of alternatives to you early next year. And one of the initial screening criteria that we'll have is construction impacts.
Okay, so to finish this item off, do we need a motion? Do we just basically ask Josh to follow up on what he said he was going to do?
Yeah, I would support the staff recommendation.
Yeah. Yeah. So just all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay, so let's see how far we can get through the rest of this agenda. The next item is review of the community questionnaire.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Hillary Gittleman, the Planning Director. And I think this is going to take us right back into a similar conversation about where we are in this process. We, I think, decided early on that we weren't going to run a typical engineering project where the engineers sit in the back room, decide their three alternatives, and we go forward and we're done with those, you know, analyzing a limited number of alternatives. We decided we were going to reach out to our community before narrowing the group of alternatives. And we've been in the process of doing that through these roundtable discussions, bringing people together to talk to each other about what all of the possible options are without knowing a lot about impacts, but just making sure we get all the ideas on the table. The idea of sending out a questionnaire at this point of the process is similar. We want folks to, first of all, give us any ideas they have on the questions we've posed, and we'll learn something from their responses. But second of all, we want folks to also understand just how complicated this process is, how many moving parts there are, and get them kind of engaged and excited about participating as we move forward and start to define and then narrow the alternatives. So we have made some changes to the draft questionnaire based on the comments we heard at the last meeting. But we would like to proceed to post this, get it out, and try and get responses to inform the council's decision, the committee's decision or recommendation and the council's decision on a small group of alternatives to move forward with. And we're teeing up that conversation with the committee and the council early in the new year.
Okay. We have one member of the public, Elizabeth Alexis.
The questionnaire looks largely unchanged from last time, so I would just, any comments we had last time, I would add them. So like, first, a grade crossing is a crossing where it's at the level that is just a train crossing. So we, in the introduction, I would, I think it's confusing people. But what I really want to talk about is, I mean, I think we said very strongly, we thought there wasn't a lot of purpose to this kind of questionnaire at this point. But what I think there would be a purpose to, and I'm sorry that Jim just left, because, you know, going off of Jim's ideas, like, if we wanted to talk about Churchill, for instance, what would be interesting is to say to people, well, we did this traffic, a standard traffic model, and it told us that nobody uses Churchill, and clearly people are using Churchill, right? And we want to understand a little bit more about why you use Churchill, when you would use Churchill, what would you do if Churchill was closed? Like, how would you get from Stanford to, you know, wherever? The other part to talk about was, if we're talking about Churchill, you're, you're talking about Alma, right? And, and I saw vision zero language, and if we have vision zero in Palo Alto, we are going to ban left turns onto Alma from old Palo Alto unless there is a stoplight or some kind of protected lane, which there are not in old Palo Alto. So that is the other place that the Churchill, for instance, right, like, if you closed Churchill, you would, the light, a lot of people actually don't use the light at Churchill to make protected turns onto Alma. They just make a left turn out of wherever they feel like it. But if you closed it and you banned turns, then you might actually see a lot more traffic on Churchill, the other part. Which, by the way, we can talk about this later, the traffic model we are using is never going to show this. So we need to talk to people. I mean, this is a place that we can actually get some data, is, is talk about scenarios and how would you do that? And you could target some of these, especially for people who are living in old Palo Alto. I mean, when you're talking about Churchill, you're talking about turns on and off of Alma. And, you know, it's possible if we get the big, you know, the data from MTC, we'll see that people are actually using Churchill, even if they're going much further south on Alma, right? I mean, they may be using Alma all the way to Mountain View or someplace else, in which case they might be able to make that turn on Charleston or something else. We don't know yet. And I think if we're going to use a questionnaire, I think the current questionnaire has all the problems and faults and like, what are you really getting out of it? But using it to really start to talk about Churchill and maybe even the Alma Palo Alto, I mean, that seems to me useful.
Any other committee comments, questions?
So we're talking about the questionnaire, right?
Yep.
So, great.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to gather my thoughts on the questionnaire. So on, on question nine, I think it could be better drafted. I mean, what are we trying to get at? It says, if residential property has to be taken for the construction of grade separation, that's pretty clear. But then we should consider the best field, whether or not they involve impacts. Impacts is different than taken. And so, I mean, I'm just thinking we should just say. And then question number B, question number B bothers me, I mean, or answer number B bothers me a little bit on that, in that I'm not sure there are any, I'm not sure there are any options that don't involve taking some property unless you're doing, you know, especially unless you're going to trench under, not trench, unless you're going to actually tunnel under the entire thing. And so, I mean, I guess, I guess the question, are there, while we have that, we don't know if that's feasible yet. So it's sort of, I don't know how to deal with that issue, frankly. But, I mean, obviously, you would rather take none. But I mean, the implication of this question is, even if other options were not feasible, should we not take private property? I mean, because I think your other question gets to the issue of, we should, if all, you know, we should consider feasible options, but prioritize those that don't. So I don't know. I mean, I'm not sure what the answer is that, but I feel a little uncomfortable with the way that's drafted. So anyway, that was my, that was my concern. And again, we're doing this because we do get a bunch of pushback every time we send out these questionnaires that, you know, they're not helpful, I don't have enough information, I don't. Do we still think it out, do we still think that the benefits are outweighing any negatives we get on this?
You know, we do. I mean, we're getting people at these roundtable discussions who are very knowledgeable and/or who live very close to the crossings. I think we're going to try with this questionnaire to reach out to people beyond that group and bring them along a little bit. And I think their, their answers to these questions, if they're willing to answer them, will be useful.
Sounds good.
Eric?
Adrian?
I mean, to Elizabeth's comments, I think it's a little tricky because I think we're trying not to talk about particular scenarios yet. But we do have questions where we mention closing Churchill. And so I was trying to think how you would ask a multiple choice question about why you're turning onto Churchill. But I don't know if you guys can think of a question that would capture that idea of, you know, kind of, you know, where are people going? It seems like a tricky question. Nothing's coming to mind for me. The other one is, is question 10 still, we had a lot of discussion last time about asking people how old they are and having the little emoji smiley face. You guys felt like we should retain this question?
You know, I think the main function of this question is that people taking the questionnaire will think that, yeah, you're right, God, this is going to take a long time. And we also can use this to understand if we're getting responses, you know, solely from one age group over another, or if we're getting a diversity of responses. from one age group over another, or if we're getting a diversity of responses.
Yeah, I was, I was telling you, I mean, yeah, I understand why we're asking it. I think, um, there's the other, other aspect of it too, which is, you know, this is a long-term infrastructure change to Palo Alto, and, um, I think you're trying to get people to think of it that way, right? So again, I, I don't know if the rest of the committee isn't really, isn't really concerned. I'm just concerned that that, the way that question's worded still isn't, isn't the best.
So agreed on question 10. I mean, if we do want the age, we should just ask people, how old are you? I'd rather than think about how old you are in 2030, we'll all get the same data. But overall, I'm still, I think this is a bit of a miss of an opportunity in that we just had this big discussion of the circulation study and there are other studies and financing papers coming up. And I, I think the survey is an opportunity to kind of include folks in that. If we're going to do a survey saying like, hey, have you read the city circulation study to look at traffic stuff? Hey, did you check out the tunneling paper that showed, you know, X, Y, and Z? And this just, to me, feels a little lightweight. It's, you know, just saying like, hey, there's going to be trains, are you worried about traffic congestion? What do you think we should do about it? So I'm, I'm not sure I completely see the benefit, and there, there are downsides to getting this kind of survey out there early on, so.
Well, I'd be interested to hear what you think the downsides are. I mean, we're always going to be in this bind of like, when is the perfect time? Do we have enough information? Do we have the right information?
Mm-hmm.
To, to get people to weigh in. I, I think we can certainly and will certainly want to do questionnaires later in the process when we know more.
Mm-hmm.
And we can drill down specifically into options and questions related on the studies about specific grade crossings. We're, we're sort of not quite at that point yet, but I, you know, I, I guess I, I don't see the disadvantages to trying to include more people in this process by asking this level of question at this point, but I'd be interested to hear if you do.
And this is the second of several questionnaires that we'll be administering throughout this process, and the first one, we got over 700 responses.
So I, I guess the downside, one is there's a bit of, there's a risk that you prod people when they're not fully informed of all the work we've done, the work we're going to do, right? And so they say like, oh my God, the city wants my opinion about what we should do about this hundred-year project, right? And so there's a risk there. Um, there's also a risk that we could be communicating what others perceive as preconceived notions, right? So even like question six, which I don't think is terribly helpful, what about the, considering the addition of a new grade separated crossing from peds and bikes, right? People might say like, oh my God, the city's going to spend money on a bike and ped thing, like, I don't think that's worth it. Right? So there, there's that risk too.
Yeah, I, I think, what do you guys think about adding a question of have you attended any of the rail meetings? Yes, no? I think it'd be good to, to separate people that have not come to anything versus some that have come.
Just listening to the discussion, one, one of the things that makes me think of is the work that like James Fishkin does over at the Center for Deliberative Democracy and where they basically deal with, you know, deliberative polling. And they make the point very often that when we do poll, we're often polling people's opinions about where they are, what they know, and they can be very often very uninformed. And the, then the using processes of engagement and context and information sharing, where you can have huge swings of where people are, 25 points even, through that sort of a process, moving from one position to the next. So I think one of the things that this does is if people aren't really that informed, it, I mean, one sense it gives us, and one sense it's the only thing it maybe gives us, is where people are in a, in a more uninformed state, and we have to ask ourselves, is that useful or not? I mean, it may be, it may not be. And we always do run the risk sometimes, even when you poll or ask, do we lock people in in their own mindset into a perspective prematurely also? Need to think about that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, to that end, it may be good to have a consistent question of basically trying to measure how far along they are in the educational path.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, you're, you're going to span, like, if you're sending it everywhere, you're going to span, some people understand this stuff and have been to the meetings and understand, and other people are going to go, what's a trench? Right? Okay? And so some of this is way too detailed for them. And other things, take the trench off the table if it costs more than we can afford with available regional, state, or federal money. I mean, one of your risks is if people read this stuff and go, why are you asking me this? So.
So I would say one other thing that, you know, we may have our own perspective, but I mean, you, you all are also the ultimate representatives of the public, and this is a public poll. I think your perspective on doing this or not doing this does carry, carry some special weight.
So you guys want to send this out tomorrow, right?
Yeah. I'm okay with you sending it out. I mean, I, to be honest, I'm not excited about it, but, I mean, you're the professionals. I defer to you guys on this, and, I mean, I, I do think that Adrian puts on a good point. I mean, the problem is we have super smart citizens. I get this thing, and I think it's like stupid and sophomoric, and, you know, but I know a lot about it. And what you're really trying to do is to reach all the people that really are not paying attention and getting them to think. And I think that's a really laudable and worthwhile goal. So if we get, you know, 10% more of our citizens to start focusing on this, oh, yeah, and to start thinking and being engaged, we've done something positive. And that's why I support it.
So I think that's a different purpose though. If we're trying to get folks engaged and increase that engagement factor, right?
I thought that's why we were doing it. No, really, I actually thought that's why.
Then, then why don't we just send a letter and say, hey, we're doing this, and by the way, we're looking at these three different things.
Because this is interactive and no one reads letters. I get letters, and you know, you know where the letters go? In the recycling bin.
I don't know. I mean, I think there's, there's different purposes here.
And what we're, what we're really trying to do in terms of getting people engaged is also, people tend to think when they haven't gotten deep into it, oh, this is just so simple. There are only three real options, you know, that, you know, I could reel them off right now. But when they start digging into these questions, I, I think our hope is that they'll understand there's more complexity there.
There could be that. So I think Tom's point about adding a question, have you engaged this process before is really helpful. And then it may be nice to preface this with saying, the city's doing this big project. Just so you know, we're doing our, you know, homework, and we've got, and just link off to the other studies we're doing, right? And say, here's the circulation study that's a draft, here's the finance study that's a draft, here's a construction study that's a draft.
Last thing at the end, are we giving them the option to put their email into the mailing list to get invited to future events?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I, I'm kind of where Greg is. I, I think, and the idea of bringing people, if they haven't been paying attention, is a good goal. You can hear we're kind of lukewarm on the questions, but I think we defer to you guys on this one.
Well, can I just throw one other thing in here? I, I don't think we have unlimited, um, opportunities with the community to ask them questions. I mean, there's, there's a point where it, it is, it's, is this going somewhere? Is this, is this evolving? Are you asking me again? So I'm, I'm sort of rethinking on our side too.
You know, I'd be fine with you not sending them out. I mean, if you guys have any, look, I don't really like this, these questions. I, I mean, I, I don't think the information they provide us is useful, and I wouldn't base any decisions on it because I don't think people have enough information. I think the questions are too simplistic, all of that. So, and I think the information we get could be totally misused. So I, you know, if we're going to have to, if we, I do hope that at some point, we do have more of a, once we have a sense and we've narrowed it down and to some, where people can actually make decisions within a constrained environment, you know. I'll give you an example. I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the preliminary cost estimates on the next one, I think, you know, why are we even talking about a cut and cover tunnel if we can do a twin deep board tunnel for, you know, a lot less money? I mean, now, it may, it's probably much more complicated in that reality is, you know, but the point is, is that I think if we only have limited opportunities to do it, maybe we shouldn't send it out. But I, I defer to you guys on that. I mean, whatever you guys think is right.
Well, you've provided some good input. Why don't we huddle and we'll, you know, either, we will or we won't do it this week. Would, and if we send it out, it will make the changes that you've recommended.
If we don't send it out, you're not going to be upset either.
I think we do, you know, just sort of as a larger observation, I think we have set ourselves, you know, along a process where we're trying to bring you information that's not, you know, studies that are in draft form, work as it's being done, and, and this is kind of part of that effort. We could, we could just stop doing all this extra work and bring you the studies when they're completed, only ask questions when we have all the data. And, you know, I'm, I feel like this is a larger question that maybe we need to tackle in the new year, maybe take another hard look at our.
No, no, I think you guys are doing a good job, and, you know, I mean, you know there's a tension between that, right? You bring stuff that's not fully, and we're going to give you our time about it, but if you hold the data, we're going to give you our time about it too. So, you know, but I mean, no, I think, we think you're doing a good job. I mean, you know, I think it's much better, this process, you get it out early. You know, imagine if you went through the whole process and you held the data, and you came back, and then we had Card over here stand up and say, we, look at the Churchill data. It's much better to get this out now. I mean, no one's holding it against you. It's just much better to do it now.
Okay, so, so we do have a hard stop at 11. Do we think we can get through this next item in 25?
We can always continue, but let's at least get the staff, you know, presentation.
This is more foundational background. Information starting point, you know.
I mean, this fascinates me, right? I'm ready to make a decision on the first one. Just, I'm ready to go with twin deep board tunnels. The hallway, twin deep board tunnels. I think we should do quad if we're going to do tunnels. Can we do some traffic tunnels too? All, all traffic. Make Alma park, bury Alma, something around the utilities at the same time.
Put some power. Are you ready, Chair?
Yes.
Today, we are joined by Jason Moody, who is with Economic and Planning Systems Incorporated. They're a sub to Mot McDonald, who's our prime contractor, and Jason's going to give you an overview of the working draft of the finance paper that was released last week. And we're planning, again, this is a early release, hot off the presses, so we're planning to leave the comment period open for a month before we finalize the draft. So this is a working draft. We're open to any kind of suggestions on additions, subtractions, reanalysis that you may have. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jason to get started. Yeah, and there's also a trenching and tunneling paper that's in the works, and we're nearing, you know, release of that. We anticipate that'll be released before the end of the year. That'll have more information on how the cost estimates were derived that are included in the finance paper. So if you have any questions about the estimates though, Chris Metzger's here, and he's working on the trenching and tunneling paper, so he'll be able to give you some information on how those estimates were developed.
I'm managing principal at Economic and Planning Systems, and we have prepared a working draft white paper on the various financing tools that you might utilize to help fund these various options. What I want to talk about a little bit is the context for this analysis in this white paper, the, quickly at the cost scenarios we looked at, and then the various financing and tools that we considered. The purpose of this is, is really to provide some initial understanding of what various costs are for various alternatives and how you might finance them with the understanding that at this point in time, both of these are moving items. Costs are moving items, and the financing is a very moving item as well. With regard to the financing side of the equation, we use readily available information and relatively standard assumptions with the notion that once you kind of decided this is something we'd like to look at further, we could drill down and, and get that better information on some of the assumptions that would drive the, the relative funding that you could get from one of these sources. We provide a whole bunch of financing tools and options with the goal of casting a very broad net. It's, it's probably likely that some of them are mutually exclusive, so you might not go out and do two things to the voters that do basically the same thing. And also, that, that, you know, some of them, you know, may be politically infeasible, I don't know, that's not for me to determine, but we threw it out there anyway. And of course, finally, the funding landscape is always changing with legal environment, politics, and business cycles and whatnot, people's appetite for raising taxes can change. And, and same with the state and federal stuff, obviously changes depending upon a variety of factors. Well, we looked at these very preliminary cost estimates that were developed by Hatch Mod, and looking at essentially one, two, three, four, five options, as you see there, and then individual grade separations kind of individually. And so we have a high and low, and again, these are very preliminary numbers, but you can conceive that the very high end is $4 billion, and then you have the individual numbers at the bottom. You have the, the twin deep board tunnels, which is actually less than the cut and cover, which is something someone mentioned, but we wanted to show you everything. Any questions on these costs?
So what's your funding plan? Let's go. Twin board tunnels. I think our work is done.
Why is Palo Alto not including Palo Alto Avenue?
You know, if I, if I could, I, I was hoping that Jason could run through the money side of it, like, how much, how we could generate funding, and then we can come back to these. I mean, this was a, kind of an initial.
Just super quick, did you include any property taking in any of these estimates?
I'm not going, I didn't do cost estimates, so.
Oh, okay.
Both of those questions are not for me, so.
Yeah, I know. I, I'd like to get Jason through his presentation, and then we'll ask Chris to come up and give you some background.
And again, these cost numbers are very preliminary, so they're not, the idea is it's really difficult to have a financing discussion without talking about what you're trying to finance, so I just threw this in, not my, these aren't my numbers, but I.
Could I just help you out on this though, too? I, I think it would be a mistake at this stage, at any point, for us to get fixated on these numbers. This is orders of magnitude. It just says, basically says, boy, a lot, there's a whole range of stuff, and then when we start to look at what the potential funding sources are, it pretty easily starts to put in perspective both what the yield is as it relates to a potential problem, then you have to deal with the political and the public acceptance issues and those sorts of things. And I think anything more than that is not, is not the expectation of the staff bringing a draft paper to you that is, you know, prelude to more strategic work you're going to have to do. Good, thanks.
Thank you. So, so first, we looked at, we divided the vote, the, the, the funding options into, as you see the white paper, two main chapters. One is kind of state, regional, federal stuff that are really kind of outside your control, and then the others are city of Palo Alto things that you could do. With regard to city of Palo Alto things, the one, the biggest one is raising taxes, which generally requires a vote. And there are basically three different things you can do there. You can have a general tax, which isn't allocated to anything in particular, 50% approval rate. Those can be harder to approve because people don't like just giving you a carte blanche to do whatever you want with their money. There's a special tax which tells you what you will do with the money, and that's a 66% two-thirds super majority, majority of voter approval. And then there's this thing called the AB strategy, which is sometimes confusing, but they do it in order to get around trying to get the 66 threshold, which is, you know, advisory measure, measure associated with a general tax. Voter approved, the property tax bond is by far your biggest bang for your buck, and we showed the various assumptions that we would do on the right here. That, that would be followed by, there's a bunch of other ones, and they're all based on assumptions. For example, it looks like utility users' tax would be the next highest, although I would point out that you already have a pretty high utility users' tax, so that might, you know, the high end may be a little bit optimistic. Parcel tax is there, additional sales tax is not bad either, you can get at the high end, which would be a quarter percent increase. You can get, you know, 60, 60. You can get, you know, sixty, sixty million, sixty million dollars from that. Any questions about these funding mechanisms and assumptions behind them or anything?
Why don't you finish? I'll ask a question.
Okay. Value capture tools. This is the idea that this, this, these improvements are providing value to property owners particularly, or not only property owners, other residents. And you want to try and capture the value that they get through a funding mechanism that would essentially, I think the classic example is an air rights situation where you provide land and then you basically sell the land, and then you take that money to help fund the improvements. But there's many, there's many different ways of doing this. Incentive zoning is another way of doing, giving people right to build higher, et cetera. These are the, you generally benefit, you generally justify these value capture mechanisms with the notion that there are some improvements, and those improvements include things like improved access and circulation to nearby property owners, new development opportunities, and potential reduced sound or visual impacts that you might get. We, this is just a map of some of the calculations. Had to assume some sort of area benefit, and this is kind of what we looked at. There's, you know, we could go broader, smaller, but this is just visualization of, we looked at nearby properties. So we kind of looked at three different ways, or actually, five different ways in which you could do it. I kind of lumped a bunch of stuff in here. Development agreement approach. And in each one of these, that one, you had to assume that some sort of new development would occur for which you would be able to capture a portion of the value. So we would say, under a low scenario, you get 500 units or, and plus 100,000 square feet of new square footage development versus the high end, 2,000 units and 750,000 square feet of development. And this is kind of development that is somehow enabled by this. It could be air rights, or it could be right near a property the city controls, or something along those lines where the developer gets kind of above and beyond what they would normally get. If it's by right, and they can do that anyway, you're not gonna be able to capture those, any value from them. And enhanced infrastructure financing district is a, is a new tool that we basically use tax increment funding, and, and that's, you, that is based on the increase in assessed value. So one, we had a 3% annual increase in assessed value. Over time, one is a 5% average increase in assessed value, just as for illustrative purposes. Melrose Community Facilities District, that requires a vote to approve property owners or residents within the defined area. And we just had a couple rate methods, at 200, $200 a unit to $600 a unit, residential unit, or 100,000, 1,000 square feet, this, this equivalent. That was the rate that you would assume a tax. Development impact fees, you're already in the process of doing a development fee, impact fee number, it already has some numbers in there associated with grade separation improvement. So we looked over a 15-year growth period or 20-year growth period to get a high-low there. And then I put this one in, although maybe it's not a value capture technique, but it's, it's one we quantified, which was the Caltrain fare surcharge, which is essentially, somehow, maybe you can get, you'd have to get Caltrain to, to, to agree to it, that you would charge people leaving from, most likely leaving Palo Alto, a charge to help pay for the improvements that they are, are getting when they get on the Caltrain, 25 cents to a dollar.
So which one's that?
That's the last one. Caltrain fare surcharge.
We can do that?
Well, you'd have to get agreement from, it would have to be, it's a complicated process, but-
Can we put a toll on, on Palo Alto, you have to pay $5 in the car?
There's, believe me, there's been a lot of ideas thrown around that weren't even included here. So that was by, not by far the, the most farfetched. But it is something we threw in as something that might consider. Now, again, this is this broad net concept that I'm doing right now. So you guys can say, don't go there.
I just want to protect you here a little bit. I mean, this was just to be able to identify what are, you know, have been used, have been talked about, whatever. We're not advancing any recommendations, please.
Other sources we talked about but didn't quantify, local parking fees. And we could quantify these if people really want us to go further. Transportation network company fees, which would be basically an Uber or Lyft. I don't think you'd get a lot of money from that. Roadway user fees, you just mentioned this one. This is electronic kind of charging to, and, and it could be done. It hasn't been done in California. It's like congestion pricing. It hasn't been done. No one's had the, the chutzpah, I guess, to go forward with that one. But it's not to say it couldn't be done. And then utility right-of-way fees. Again, I don't think that's gonna generate a lot of money. It's just, we just threw it in there as an idea. Then we looked at selected state and regional federal sources, one of which is already out there, Measure B, and we just took a range of what you might generate from that. This has already been, this is, already been public, this is, this information is pretty much out there. So we know that Measure B will be generating money. They've allocated money for grade separation. This is the amount, between 350 to almost 400 million, depending upon how you interpret it. The problem with this source, as you probably know, is it's accumulative. It comes every year. You're not really bonding against it. So you don't get the money upfront, which is one of the problems. Section 190, this is another source of funniest, particularly for grade separation. We made some assumptions about how much you might get from there. Obviously, it's not a lot. It's between 2 and 5 million. This last one is the most unknown of all. How much will the High Speed Rail Authority help you out here? We know the High Speed Rail Authority is gonna spend money, they obviously will, to, to make that connection to San Francisco. The real question is, is will their money be kind of a base case, and what you're doing is above and beyond that, and they're not gonna pay any of that? Or can you create some sort of intersection where you're helping them and they're helping you, and how much can you, you get? So then there's another, a variety of other state and federal sources that we didn't quantify because they're really hard to predict, they're competitive, they're political cycle type stuff. But they're very real, and we've seen a lot of examples. For example, TFIAs one that's quite commonly used. And it's a good one because it's a loan program that you can pay back with other general fund sources. So if you were able to, Measure B, for example, that money is coming out at, over time, maybe you get a TFIAs, you get that money now, and you pay back the TFIAs with Measure B. So you were able to advance your funding a little bit. Obviously, there's some financing costs you need to consider, but it is a way of getting money sooner, which is really critical in something like this. So you don't wait for 25 years before you have the money to do what you want. That's it.
All right. Great presentation. All right, so we have two members of the public, maybe three. First speaker, Elizabeth Alexis, followed by Nadia Nyak.
Okay, so, thank you very much. That was actually incredibly useful information. And by the way, I may be teaching a class on transportation finance, so call me. Yeah, so I mean, I, I found this very helpful, I think, both in the context of sort of scale and scope, and just a comprehensive look at the different kinds of ways to pay for things. I also found it very useful to see the comparison, like where we're kind of high, where we've sort of tapped out a resource, and where we have available money to go. Obviously, I mean, the two things that I would look at, that, you know, our, our property tax is obviously something that's, that's an interesting possibility. And combined with the fact that the school board actually just restructured the way they're collecting taxes, they're actually decreasing their, between now and like 2022 or 2023, are gonna be decreasing from about 80, whatever, .008 to .06. There's actually some room there, I think, to, to assess if, if we want to pay for it. That's a pretty straightforward way to do things. The other place that I thought was very interesting was on the business license tax. I don't know, just looked at 10 years. And looking at San Francisco, they seem to have a lot, they are charging a lot of money per employee, and they still seem to have a lot of companies that want to set up there. I mean, that one seems to me that this number could be 10 times more than what's even in this estimate. And if you wanted to find a way that both business and people share the cost, that seems like a nice kind of combination between property taxes and businesses. The other thing I would say is that I think, looking at, it was, I think, very helpful to see just even in our city finances, the difference between a few hotels provide as much tax because of TOT, we get all of it, versus sales tax, where we only keep 1% of it, that really what we should be doing is we should be doing value capture next to both Calab Station and the Palo Alto Station, and we should just build a ton of hotels. For real, I'm not kidding. Like Stanford will need these for all their conferences. You get the TOT, you get a little value capture. Anyway, those are, those are things that looked very real and interesting. What?
I say that all the time.
Right?
You put that in the comp plan.
Like, it should be, okay, Eric, I'm totally with you. Why are we not building more hotels? I mean, like, and they're actually very expensive and, like, terrible places to stay. And I, my friends are always on my couch because they're like, I can't find a place to stay in Palo Alto. So we would actually reduce, yeah, they could stay close to Stanford without having to cross our grade crossing, or grade separations. No, for real, I thought this was very helpful and useful. The only comments I would really have is like, why just looking at 10 years versus 30 years on both the sales tax and the business license tax, and why not looking at kind of the whole range up to kind of a, a San Francisco level?
So Nadia, followed by Tony Carrasco.
Hi, so I'm gonna be the dark rain cloud this morning. So I was not so happy to see the Daily Post run the article on Wednesday, which you may or may not have seen if you were in town. But unfortunately, the Daily Post is now online as well. So the headline was rail things could cost as much as $4 billion. Now, I know that these are all draft numbers and don't mean anything, and it's just a ballpark, and it was just for the point of a presentation, but that's not helpful. And your biggest concern is not having the community feel like we have prebaked the alternatives. And we continue both in some of the things that we've sought, even the community meetings that we've had. I don't know if anybody noticed because I know these alternatives by heart, I kind of didn't pay attention, but my neighbors brought to my attention, we don't have any aerials in any of our analysis anywhere. Not on the baseball cards, not on the bingo cards. So in the minds of those peoples who's, could be affected by eminent domain, trenching and tunneling looks crazy expensive. And moving the road means eminent domain, and the city has not looked at the alternative of actually having any kind of aerial. Now, I'm not saying that's what they might like.
Any kind of what?
Aerial structure. We didn't look at an elevated of any kind, not a berm, not an aerial. It's not in there. Now, we changed our guiding principles to say we're open to all alternatives. We're actually not doing that analysis, right? I thought his comment at the beginning of his presentation was really interesting. He said, this is really hard to do when we don't actually know what we're solving for. And this is a theme. You heard the traffic study, and you're like, you know, I don't know how much more money we should throw at this traffic study if we don't know what questions we're trying to answer, right? And then in the survey, you know, I don't really know if we should send out a survey if we don't really know what questions we're trying to answer. Guess what? That's what CSS was supposed to do. We were supposed to say, hey, let's define what our problem is really clearly. Let's really figure out, when we do a traffic model, what are we trying to find out for? What if we're gonna do funding? What are we really gonna try to fund so that we could get people to give money into this? So I'm just saying, if this is CSS, I don't think it's working the way it's supposed to, and we might want to reanalyze whether we're actually doing CSS properly. Thanks.
Tony Carrasco, and then Peter Testovich.
Hi, Tony Carrasco, 583 Glenbrook Drive in Palo Alto. I also wanted to compliment you on the, on the report. It was a good first pass at understanding the problem. It's grossly generalized, but I think we get a picture of, of where it is. I'm gonna just focus on the value capture side of it. I think it's underestimated by about five times, and that's a big number. It should go, I think it should be from, instead of 235 million, it should go to a billion. And here's why. The first issue is that what you've captured is 10% of the value of the building, which is, the buildings in Palo Alto, Class A building is conservatively $1,200 per square foot. So you get $120. It should be higher, closer to trains, but let's say, using your number, using general data, it's $120. What land sells for here, close to the train station, is between 400 to $500 per square foot. I think our view as Palatans is we are creating that value. We are creating that land. We are creating, we take the impacts from that land. And so I think we should be taking a fraction of $500 per square foot. And I would say, use 80% of $500 a square foot. And I'll tell you why. If, as a developer, I purchase this land and I get the land 20% cheaper, less, I'm making 5% more on my profit. Clear? That, that simple. So I would use a 400, 350 to 400 number instead of 120 number. The second issue, and that gives you four times what you have. The second issue is downtown lots, downtown, a block in Palo Alto is about 100,000 square feet, 400 by 400, by 400 by 225, approximately 100. At four stories, 50 feet high, we get 400,000 square feet. What you've estimated here is approximately a million square feet, in rough numbers. The area there can contain about five to six blocks. Let's say five. So that's about twice as much, or one and a half times as much as you've estimated. Add 50%, and so I say it's five times less than what you have. So we should be at about $1 billion in value capture on, on building on that side. So that's it. And if you can drill into that side of it, I'd appreciate it.
Peter?
Just a quick note about the impracticality of the Caltrain fare surcharges. Most Caltrain commuters, unlike part, use monthly passes, and they're zoned, there's zone-based pricing. Palo Alto's in Zone 3. That includes all the cities from Atherton through Sunnyvale. So there's really no way, and they only tag on once a month, at the beginning of the month, for their monthly pass. So it, it will be really hard to capture that. I mean, for occasional users who don't use a monthly pass, that could work, but the main commuters, they use monthly passes, and they tag on once a month, and might not necessarily be, they don't tag on in Palo Alto unless they're commuting from Palo Alto to someplace else. They'll probably tag wherever they're living and go to Palo Alto. So that, that's very impractical.
Maybe that calculation is based on departing from-
Yeah, but they don't tag, they, you don't, they don't capture it. Monthly users only tag on once a month, at the beginning of the month, and then, then with their Clipper card, and then they don't, they don't tag on, on and off at all for the rest of the month.
Thank you. So we need to stop the meeting at this point, so I would move that we can continue this item, unfortunately. But thank you, it was a good, good start, and I, I hope you can make it back when we finish this item.
Thank you.
Okay, and I think with that, the meeting adjourns. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good. There's probably gonna be-